The first one we got here is Bethany Eichler with Northwest Immigration Rights Project. And an attorney with them that after our ordinance or resolution that we had last time, we just said, let's get some more information about what's really going on. So this is what Bethany does, works with our immigrant community full time and can answer any questions and address, you know, any issues or things that come up, but hopefully we can agree to move something forward.
Yeah, Anne was, I watched the three hour session, I think I was paying attention. I watched the last meeting I missed. Does she have some questions?
She didn't leave, hopefully she'll watch this as well so that she can, you know, because she was wondering about the need for it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, so Bethany, you want to go ahead and come up and introduce and?
Well, first of all, thank you all for your time to listen and for having me here. Like the mayor said, I am an attorney with the Northwest Immigrant Rights Project and we have four offices throughout the state. So between all of our offices, we kind of have a thing where on the pulse of what the communities are feeling, what our immigrant communities are getting, sort of a different look, all sort of the state. And then, and I'm from the area, so I also have the side being connected to my current experiences. We have friends and family, I've moved, I've moved back in the area for the last eight years, from cashmere living in one inch. So I, Mayor shared with me some questions that came up at your last meeting when you were discussing the welcoming resolution. And I'm going to try to answer those, what I understand to be kind of three big questions. And then please feel free to ask me any questions you have to handle, trying to, as possible, I know I won't talk too much. So, um, what I'm going to be trying to answer is like, why, why is it important for cities, cities in this area specifically to pass a welcoming resolution? What does that add? Or what is it doing if you already have a welcoming community? And then specifically to hear a resolution, why a call for a process for those work to be completely documented? And then there was a concern in stand about would passing such a resolution of support, potentially working against the immigrant community by putting a term of release tax or any enforcement. And so I think the most important question is why, why is it important for cities to pass these welcoming resolutions right now? And as I'm sure you're all aware, with the current federal legislation, strong stance on immigration and a very seeking increased enforcement, the, or immigration enforcement, there's been a really associate cultural shift that has been felt, not just nationwide, but really in our community and in our immigrant communities. And, and so what is that like in Wenatchee, cashmere living in this, this area? On, from the immigrant side of it, and I mean, speaking generally for our clients and then school administrators and different friends who work over the community. There's just a pretty overwhelming, life-changing pervasive fear that is, there's no, there's not a person living, and many people documented, maybe not with an permanent status, but with legal immigration status and undocumented living, just living a pretty paralyzing fear that has impacted daily life and how they interact in their community. How that has manifested from what we've seen, some of the key ways is people not sending their kids to school. People can't, they just won't come to school, afraid that they will need immigration enforcement in schools. Or even that that will raise exposure, sending their kids to school where other kids might ask questions and tell their parents separation status. So they're just saying, we were sent, told them to the school. There's also been an uptick in immigration-based, for like a better immigration-based qualitying of, of other students, fellow students. So a lot of things like your parents are going to get deported and you're going to be, you're going to go to state, they're going to be like, those are kids are hearing that, they're going to be home, you know, terrified, they're talking to their parents about it. And then we're also seeing not just school, they're going to school, but our workforce needing impacted. I have a farmer, a rower, a family who was getting, you know, started to do spring work and had a crew. And then suddenly two thirds of the crew just gone. And the, the other members, the reason given was that people are afraid, there's step rate, the more engagement, the more risk of enforcement, of immigration enforcement. And so, or maybe, yeah, living their family at, at risk as well. And it's, it's to the degree where we've also been invited, our organization gives, so it's called Do Your Rights Presentations. I hope that you've heard of those, but we can go and just share with, with community members the rights that everybody has, whether they're citizens or non-citizens, documented, non-blocked, sort of the rights turning silent and right against unlawful surfs or seizures, things like that. So we give those presentations and we've been asked to give many of those, many more of those in recent months than previously, to the point where we couldn't, we couldn't, we don't need, so we made an arrangement with the Washington libraries and we were giving rights presentations at the rural locations. And after, you know, people virtually begging left and right for us communities, we had extremely little turnout at those. And after advertising as well, our understanding through speaking communities was that people are step rate, eager to go to the library to listen to your rights presentation. So I think it's been fear because of just obvious immigration enforcement, but also because of sort of a growing hostile hostility from, from some community members or, it's just, it's emboldened, I think, people feel boldened to express anti-centric behavior. So there's just a really crucial time to be communicating, to be making our communities welcoming and, and promoting engagement of all residents who live here in, in the city life. And I think a city resolution, a welcoming resolution by the city is, it's the leadership, right? It's the leadership setting a tone and impressive and, and obviously not going to be a girl and, and fix bullying in schools, but it is a, that's a first step. And it also will be, it also in a sense go like, the, the total, what is our, what is our pressure going to be like here? What's going to be supported and promoted and accepted and what's, what's not going to be okay? And, and just maybe formalizing that, I think it, it not only signals to, to citizens or documented residents, what kind of a community that they should be helping make, but then also signals to people who can be documented, maybe in a really long process trying to get documentation, that it's still safe for them to be a member of the community and participate in school and then work without fear of retaliation hostility. So that's why I think a resolution, it really is, it maybe seems like a nominal gesture or just an almost inconsequential step, but it is, I think, a primary first pivotal step and it, it helps foster, it, it signals to the rest of the community, to the schools and to all the different parts of our, of our communities. How we should be treating other human beings, basically. And then, and then jumping down to the, to the concern that maybe passing a resolution like this might actually put people at risk because potentially ICE might, might target in communities that have issued a welcoming resolution. We just don't see that as a concern or a fear. ICE, immigration customs enforcement is, you know, it's a subset of Department of Homeland Security and their immigration enforcement priorities are, are nationwide policies that are, you know, issued by high level leaders and, and passed down. And immigration enforcement is going to be doing their job regardless of, of if a town has a welcoming resolution or not. And so, and we, and, and there, those priorities are based on individuals, immigration histories, criminal histories, personal statuses. We have not seen, and we don't anticipate, and we've seen immigration enforcement's are retaliating against some jurisdiction simply because they think it'd welcome any town. And I think maybe there's some completion of the talks of federal funding, being like help from states that don't maybe cooperate in the enforcement of, of federal immigration laws, but that's not the issue here. And it's not, it's not an overt statement that we're, you know, we're not cooperating with any simple that we're, we'll be a welcoming state at all. And if anything, we have seen probably more ICE enforcement in, in towns and towns where that are sort of known to be more hostile to if their immigrant community members live in there. And it's, it's, it's been reverse of that really, if we've seen in, in practice. And then, am I out of time?
No.
The, the last question that I understood you had was why a call for a process for those who were to be legally documented? And I think one of the biggest misconceptions of our, our immigration system, at least it was mine, one of mine before becoming acquainted with it as a, as an attorney, is that there is a legal pathway for immigrants who want to have legal status. And for a, I won't say a majority, but for a large portion of immigrants living in the country or outside of the country, there is not, there is not a form of immigration status or really available to them. So we have a very finite number of types of immigration status that can be applied for in our country. Which obviously that's a whole other conversation, but the catheter names that I think I hear a lot from people, why don't they do it the legal way? Why don't they get in line? And they're in a line for a lot of people. There's, you know, it could be, I forget, but we've gone course on the 10 types of immigration relief that are available. And 10 is not the accurate number, but it's, it's, it's small. It's a small set of options for people and it's, it's extremely limited. There's, it's, it's an extremely lengthy process, many people need to qualify. And then it's also usually an extremely expensive process. Including for forms of immigration relief or the fee waivers available. It's really hard to do any of that without immigration, immigration waivers cost more than, than the applications themselves sometimes. We're a nonprofit, but to qualify for our services, we have people that serve. So there's just a lot of people who are not making a lot of money, but they're not, they're little enough to qualify services like ours. And there just aren't, we can't need all the need of others. So there's, there's so many people who don't have the, the option, period, or don't have access, because it's a cost. Or they're in the process and it is a long one, that's taking 20 years. They're doing it as quickly as available, as available to them. So we, we, I think that the immigration system is broken and I take, regardless of your political affiliation, both sides of the aisle sort of share that view. And so that, that's a reason to include that, that ask in a, in a city resolution as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions if there's time for that. Thank you for listening.
Bethany, I wanted to ask you, do you have a, a hard number of undocumented immigrants that have taken by ICE? Is there any, is there any record keeping of that you knew got taken and?
From?
From Wenatchee, I said Wenatchee Valley?
No, we've, we've, no, we don't. We've had a lot of people have been, they've gone voluntarily reported to a check-in and then been detained there and transported to the Northwest Detention Center, which is where anyone, or anyone detained by ICE in Washington state will first be taken to the detention center and the detention center. As it's, it's overflowing at this point. We, we do have, our office in Tacoma does, does a legal orientation program there and they have 200 people waiting for, new people waiting for new takes at the detention center. So that's probably the closest I have right now.
Okay. Yeah, Bethany, I was curious, I received, I think other council members received a couple emails regarding ICE facilities, but it, it looks like they were referring to Leavenworth, Kansas. But I had a question like, what, what would it take for ICE to have a facility in, in a, in a town? What are the, what are the, what's the process like to, you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
A facility like a detention with beds, like a, like a jail.
I'm not sure, I'm.
Because we have, they have satellite offices, so there is a HSI Homeland Security Investigations Office in Wenatchee that sort of functions as the ICE DRO, which is enforcement and removal office out of Yakima. That's, that's sort of satellite office there. So officers, I think there is one from an officer of Wenatchee, but they substitute from Yakima. And I don't know what the, I don't know how they select sites, you know, if there's a requirement by, per capita.
Okay.
As far as. But I think that also, ours is also, northern Idaho at least, that's where immigrants detained would advocate. And some in Florida.
Okay. Thanks. I, I wasn't sure if you, if you knew, the, the email that I received were pretty vague. It just said ICE facility and I didn't know what that meant, but.
I wouldn't underestimate this administration when you say that they wouldn't target, target Leavenworth if we passed a resolution. And this, it sounds egregious to say that, but Bob Ferguson has been the most sued, suing, suing Trump the most in the first administration. I mean, Washington kind of put a target a little bit on its back as far as this goes too, right? In Seattle, they really, they went to schools early on, like one of the first was like Seattle, right? That ICE went in and it's like, pick on Seattle, ICE, like, because I think this is Washington kind of state thing. And so I'm, I'm, I wondered that if we do this and you had mentioned it, you mentioned the schools a lot and I hope that the schools are the first, besides a local city council passing a resolution, I would think the schools is the first thing to make people comfortable in the communities, right? When they're talking to the kid, like the, the schools start with the kids and you mentioned schools a lot. And then I don't want to give some sort of false hope that, okay, that we're a sanctuary city or misunderstand that like this resolution, we can have any protections to really help people. It's, I, I hate, I don't want to get this false sense that we would be able to protect people.
I, I think it, I think that is a valid concern. And I, it's important, I think, to not use that word sanctuary because A, nobody understands, there's disagreement on what that means. And, and, and so, but I, but a welcoming resolution is so many, it's, I don't want to downplay it. It's, it's so basic. It's not, it's not offering any, it's not offering any kind of protection and ICE.
I understand that, you understand that, but I mean, when people see that, or maybe they're reading the Leavenworth Echo, you know, one article, they, they may think, oh, woo, you know, I was kind of not going through these things, I'm, I'm safe now. And if something happens, it's like, wait, I thought my city had my back, because there is misunderstanding or sanctuary cities is what that is really. I'm just the.
But I don't, yes, I, I.
Am I, am I thinking of getting far into this?
I don't, I, what I, I think that, right, so the potential downside, right, is that somebody leaps to Leavenworth and is, it's. I guess what's the potential harm versus the potential help of being, creating a, a town and a community that isn't?
It's the Wild West in this country as far as the federal administration goes. I just don't want to, right, you have some misunderstanding that, because we've passed this, that people in our community, we are a welcoming community, I think the answer at the last meeting, we are, and we portray that. There's, there's nothing that even says that we aren't in any certain way.
I think no matter what you do, you can't eliminate misunderstanding. We, we do know your rights presentations, that we're constantly misunderstanding and rumors are spread all the time. But I don't think that's a reason to not, some people's misunderstanding, I don't think is a reason to not create and promote, not just to the immigrants in, in your community, but to all the community members of, this is the type of, of city that we are. I think that that's really crucial in, I think it counters the, sort of what you're referring to of, this is just, everybody's on board with, with seeking enforcement that lets community members know that they're, they're not completely alone, that their neighbors, they're, that they can go to the store.
So how many small towns in, in Shalane County or Eastern Washington are near, have passed this resolution so far or are discussing it?
I, Shalane is discussing it, I don't know what they did. And I, I haven't, I don't know, I can't remember. I don't know the numbers, I don't, just pass them.
I know, I know that there's other cities in this, in Eastern Washington that have more immigrants than we do in Leavenworth. And so just, I'm just kind of asking like, and not in any certain terms that we need to follow or lead or, I'm just, I'm just curious as a litmus test of like, who's discussing this right now as first small town? And we, and Mayor, Mayor Forrester, you are a champion for people's rights and like this is, this is a Leavenworth, very Leavenworthian thing for us to do. Right. I'm just purely asking.
Well, and then again, it's, it's a matter, for me, it's a matter of is, is it right to be a welcoming community? And is it right to reassure people and like she says, to set a tone that said what we officially say can, can hopefully trickle down some. It can set a tone. And so is it a big thing? Is it a huge thing? Is it, but it's, but it's a thing that you can do.
It's a yes and, I agree with everything you said. The word you used reassure still gives me anxiety because we can't reassure people. And I still do have concerns because this administration, I believe, makes policy decisions on what plays well on Fox News at 6:00 PM and our town would play really well on Fox News at 6:00 PM. That is a concern, but I think this is a really valid ask regardless of fault.
Do you have a stance on immigrants that are here and they're criminals?
Well, there are, so criminals is a big bucket, I guess. There are, there's a spectrum of types of criminal convictions that people have. And some of them, some of those convictions render people ineligible for any sort of immigration relief and others don't. And so as an immigration attorney, helping somebody seek or to lawful immigration status, it's really a matter of look at the law and see if, do you have a, a criminal conviction that's going to, that makes you ineligible? We're not able to help you. Do you have a criminal conviction that doesn't make you ineligible, but you're going to, there's a discretionary determination that government's going to make? We would assist that person and help them make their best case for, with a waiver of that criminal conviction. So it would, that's a, a complicated, but fair question. But yes, so we, we, as my organization itself, and most, and any immigration leader that's representing people seeking British status, perhaps I shouldn't speak for everybody, but there's, it's, it's, it's not uncommon that somebody has a, a criminal conviction, but it doesn't render them ineligible, like a, a a simple assault, driving without a license or driving with suspended license, things like this versus up to what are called, I read felonies are particularly serious crimes, which are people getting immigration.
Is there a, excuse me, number of immigrants that can come into a state like Washington, you all take 2,000 immigrants, California takes 4,000. Is there any kind of a thing like that?
Um, no, as. You mean, when people come and present themselves at the border and are seeking asylum or entry? Yes. So, no, it's usually not in miracle by, it's not in our court by state. Right now, there is no way to present at the border and ask for asylum, that's completely shut down. But previously, if, if people came and asked planes or requested asylum at the border, depending on a number of other factors, some would be detained there and they'll process them at the border. But sometimes they'll, they'll be released into the United States and put into a deportation proceeding where they can then apply for asylum. So people often go to a state where they, they know one person and so they, and that person can receive that and they can live there. So it's not governed by, Washington has 10 open spots, we can send 10 there this week. It's, it's not by state like that.
Well, do we have, for the people that are coming in, if they don't have jobs and we don't have jobs for them, then the rest of us are, this sounds tacky, but the rest of us are having to feed and whatever. People who, who don't have, and if there's so many, some people are hard, are having a hard enough time feeding themselves that are, that are here, you know, aren't immigrants that are here.
I think that's probably outside of my area of expertise, but I do, you know, it's up for debate whether there's, whether, you know, the immigrant workforce is negatively impacting the citizen workforce. But what we found is that a lot of jobs go unfilled when there's mass deportations of immigrants.
Most are, are working. They may not have documentation, but they're working.
Right.
Is this an issue in the state of Washington?
Is, is what an issue?
Immigration an issue in the state of Washington? I mean, we're already Democrats, so President Trump, you know, is, is kind of going through those kinds of things. And since he's wanting immigration to stop, to stop, it sounds like, that if it continues and people are already kind of targeted for being Democratic, it bothers me, it worries me.
It worries you that they're passing a welcoming resolution? You would front that in the city?
Come up with something, you know, that, that he, he seems to come up with something every day, something else. And I just, you said something about being targeted.
That was one of the sort of other questions I understood people were concerned about passing a welcoming resolution that might be hurting, putting a burden on the backs of the Americans and that, lower power enforcement. Our response to that is every immigrant has a burden on their back right now. And so to at least have communities, especially on the red side of the state that say, we, you know, we, we care about all our citizens. We welcome everybody. That, that, you know, this kind of depends from person to person on the community, the type of community you're living in and what you think. But it helps promote the culture of inclusivity and kindness and not exclusivity and discrimination. And so it's not, it's not saying you're not going to enforce laws, uphold and respect laws. It's just saying we're a place that cares about everybody equally and welcomes everybody.
And again, what, you know, what Bethany had said earlier when she started was there is tremendous amount of fear out there. And all you're doing is addressing that as, as a community to say, okay, we understand that, we get that. And we don't want to be a part of that. We don't want to add to that. We don't want to, you know, so I, I, it's, we've got a lot of immigrant in our community, immigrant workforce.
Yeah, a lot.
That we are dependent on. And I think to give them an affirmation of welcome and appreciation that they are a part, we value their, the cultural aspects that they bring, the workforce they bring. I think it's a very small thing that could still set a tone, that we're not going to just let it go. We're going to restate it because of the fears that are out there. And, and not everybody in our valley is welcome. Let's face it.
I think that a resolution of this, what we've seen, is not, is not putting a target on us. I think it's a very new, pretty much a neutral and affirmation of, of a welcome situation. And I think that part about bullying in school and intimidation is felt. I mean, we don't feel because we're white, but if you're out there, a person of color and you're working and I, I know there's a much, oh, talk to them. So that whole thing, something we're not connected to, but they're very realistic, connected to it. And intimidation is out there, it's now sort of got permission. I think we need as a council to at least come up and state that there. I think we need as a council to at least come up and states that they're welcome. And we want, you know, uh, there's nothing about protection, it's just a welcome thing and they, and, uh. And, uh. What that, what they've done for the, for the community, harvested our crops, all that stuff is all true. I think that needs to be affirmed. That's, that's what I, that's my feeling.
I want to weigh in on kind of the, the comment that we already made it clear that we're welcoming community and that's great. The messages of division and messages of exclusion are pervasive right now in our current culture. And I don't think that it hurts to make this message more pervasive. Seemingly, the people who are making the statements of exclusivity and, and division are. Doing it without any fear of repercussions. And yet the good guys, I'll, I'll call us the good guys here because I truly believe we are and gals. Uh, we, we are afraid to say that we care about human beings because of. We don't want the bad guys to come back down on us. That's pretty cowardly. I think that we need to stand up and speak loudly on this issue and do it as often as necessary. Um, to let people know that it is normal around here to care about our neighbors. And I don't care if Donald Trump and his cronies hold a few grants back from us. Um, I'd like our community members to know that we have immunity and we support.
Um, well, we will bring a resolution back. Well, and again, I will, we'll. Kind of tweak it, clean it up, maybe take a little bit of. Stuff out, but anyway, we'll circulate it. And please get back to me with some comments, because you know, I wanna, I, I really would like to see us affirm something. So.
Can we do a survey where people's names aren't involved? So nobody has to worry about anything and the survey would be in support of us doing this or not? Let the community talk.
I, again, I, I think sometimes when it comes down to, as Mike was saying, what's right? You know, you don't just. See what the temp is or what, where the wind's blowing, you just make, make it because it's right. And let the chips walk, walk where they may.
And whose right is that?
But we're elected by the people, right?
So I'd like to hear the people.
Well, but that's, that's what, that's, you're elected by the people that make choices. But we don't need to go to them for everything in order to vote. We, we represent and we represent people and I, people I represent. I feel like would love to see us welcoming.
And Sharon, you can vote yes or no.
Oh, I can abstain.
All right, well, we need to move on, so thank you.
Thank you.
I know you're, yeah, super, super busy, so thanks for taking it. All right, chamber report.
Is that you?
You're nothing now. Okay, try it.
Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, great. I should have just clicked off and let Kevin hang. Hi, city council, hello mayor, hello city workers. Um, I see Andrea, I see Selby, hello you guys. Um, okay, let's, uh, talk about some fun stuff here. Well, some fun stuff and some scary stuff a little bit. But I'm gonna share this little screen, so, um. Recreation ambassador program applications went live last Friday. I already have three applications in. Uh, so this is, um, going to be open until we get all the positions filled. And with the extra funding we got from the county, we are now starting at the very end of May. And we'll have ambassadors all through June, which we used to start at the very end of June. Uh, so we're adding on for, uh, additional weekends at the very top of the season. And then we have identified who is going to be a full-time recreation ambassador of this. On the summer, but we're not, haven't announced that publicly yet, and then we're still hiring for three new positions. Um, to assist and supplement the recreation and volunteer recreation ambassadors. Um, I'm gonna give you a little preview of our economic and visitor annual report. Um, just completed it this week and it'll go live on Friday. Um, this is one thing I wanted to, I thought is very interesting, um, never put this slide in here before. Need to make my screen bigger. And that is. Our income sources and our annual expenses, um. Many people are shocked to find out that membership dues only make up five percent of our actual income. And that the biggest part of our income now because of Oktoberfest, our festivals, the city lodging tax coming in second. Um, and then our annual expenses go to surprise, surprise, salary and wages and festivals and events. And this is a combined of, uh, lap and chamber budgets together. So it shows both the marketing and the chamber side of the stuff. Um, and then also the lodging tax collections, uh, chamber or Leavenworth, uh, city versus county, a lodging tax collection. You can see it last year, by about two hundred thousand dollars, the county's, um, intake fell once again. Also is, uh, Shontala just gotten out the report not too long ago that showed December. So this, um, is a calendar collection, uh, chart, unlike the one that she sends. I always point that out because it'll look different if you try to compare the two. Uh, but this chart shows the month it was collected, so, uh, end of the year on a good note with December for both retail tax. And city lodging tax, uh, that doesn't necessarily mean we have more people. It means that, um, inflation and average daily room rate were probably the culprit of why we have higher numbers there. Um, finished up our visitor center last year, welcome center, we now call, um, sixty seven hundred phone calls. Eighty thousand walk-in visitors if you count the fest hall at Christmas Town that we service. Um, and sixty five thousand emails and our ambassadors talked to fourteen thousand people and picked up a hundred and twenty nine bags of trash. Probably should have rounded that up to one thirty to look more attractive, but I like literal things. Um, you might have noticed too that the, um, we updated the, uh, it's our actual fifth anniversary for the recreation ambassador program, believe it or not. This is our fifth year, so to celebrate that, um, we updated the logo to be a little bit more area specific. So it now says Leavenworth and if you can see, it has a sleeping lady mountain in the background there. Two more slides and you're done with me. This is kind of a fun, there's a couple pages on destination summary and some data. For, um, DMAs and that is destination marketing areas. So like, when you see Seattle here, it's not just the city, it's the whole Seattle Tacoma area. Anywhere that King Five can reach is part of the Seattle DMA. So some of the top DMAs, um, top DMAs by length of stay, Houston topped it out at three point six days on average. That a person from Houston will stay in Leavenworth. Um, average daily spend of people that come here is a hundred and thirty six dollars per person per day. Uh, and then also have my pedestrian football chart, um, showing this year versus last year. Now we really ended the year a lot better versus the beginning of, of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, ended a lot better. Length of stay by distance and spending by category. Uh, the biggest spending category is dining and nightlife, uh, followed by, what is that grocery? And, uh, I can't see that. Department stores, so shops, uh, and then followed by accommodations, service stations, clothing and accessories, specialty retail. Leisure, recreation, fast food and transportation. Um, so that is just seven slides of a twenty page report that will be out on Friday. Um, and also in the news, we just had a press release, you can find it all at leavenworthchamber.org. Uh, you can find the link to the recreation ambassadors and a couple of our press releases. One about all the things going on on May Fest, there is so much fun things happening at May Fest, there's Rock Fest returning, we have our traditional My Fest. Um, and, uh, we have the chainsaw car wreaths come back, the My Blumenloft run, Bird Fest, the Outhorn Celebration. So lots of stuff coming up in May, um, and you can find that press release on the leavenworthchamber.org website. Any questions?
Questions, Sharon?
Will the chamber be, um, or not the chamber, well, chamber this district? Will they be adhering at all to the proclamation declaring, uh, April twenty first to twenty eighth? International Dark Sky Week by having their lights off downtown?
Uh, we don't have any lights on anymore after, um, uh, after. Yeah, at this point, I don't believe, um. Think we're had, the birch trees are off by, by the end of, or should be off by the end of last month. So if there are any trees on, they'll be turned off.
What about, uh, business lights? Like if your business is open. At that time of night.
Are you talking about interior lights or exterior lights? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, you know, the town's pretty well lit up. And so I'm just wondering if it, during that week, if it will be when it's dark, there won't be any lights on at all. Anywhere downtown. I'm just wondering.
I have no idea, sorry. I have no idea. I mean, if, if you would like, if the city would like us to have any of the lights on the trees that we might still have. We leave some of the lights, like the oak tree and some of the birch lights on because it's so dark. Um, uh, when at the end of February, we leave them on a little bit longer just for safety sake. But they should be off by now, uh, but we don't control any other lights or what businesses have lights on or off. That's up to them.
Just wondering, thank you.
All right, any other questions? We'll move on to portable sign discussion.
Yeah, um, and I can try to trim down my presentation because I know we've got a lot to get moved. Um, and I have brought this up to the council before, um, I just wanted to put it on your radar again because it has been a real challenge for staff. Uh, basically since twenty twenty when Covid, um, Covid hit and everything shut down. Uh, a lot of the restrictions kind of went by the wayside. And, uh, we're just seeing it kind of ramp back up with business owners putting signs out into the street or out on the sidewalk, um. Putting out more signs than they're allowed, um, they're not compliant with the theme, but, um, there's a lot of issues. I did put together a whole slide presentation, I don't know, but I have to give that to you. Um, but I just wanted to, I guess, bring it up because I'm looking for, I, I've discussed this with, um, the designer review board. I know the chamber board met and we're trying to find ways to make it, A, easier for us to do enforcement. Because we don't have time to send staff down there every day to pick up signs, um. I've done, we've done some public, some, uh, outreach with like brochures going to businesses in the past, uh. But we really, the discussion topic was, uh, possibly amending the code to require a permit. If you're gonna have a portable sign out front, um, and that way staff can review their compliance with designer, the, uh. The rubber bearing outline being, um, for size, for location and quantity. And then they get a permit, um, it's a one-time deal. Uh, and it just gives us a little over sign versus people throwing out whatever they want, um. It really is, I, I don't want you to walk down in the mornings, um, when there aren't any signs out. You ever get a chance, you should, um, versus the afternoons on a really nice day and all the signs are out. And, uh, it just detracts from. All the effort people put into their buildings and their actual, the signage on the walls and the hanging signs, there's so much detail and it's so cool. And then we throw out this, you know. Paper sign and it just really detracts from, from that. So in, in your packet, I did put together a presentation, maybe we have more time.
We voted on it tonight, I think we're ready. Sixty five dollar fee, five hundred dollar non-compliance fine. Absolutely. It was very well done. It makes sense.
If you get the gist of what I'm trying, it's gonna be, we, we're looking for a combination of outreach, uh. Penalty, stiff penalties, because the way the code reads now is we have to go out, um, tell them you need to move your sign. They do it once, done deal, we have to start the process over if they do it again. And we don't get a fine until it's been like ten days of non-compliance and with this type of action, it's really hard. Yeah.
How, how does this, how, what does enforcement look like and how is the, how's the person?
We never find anyone because we have to start the process over, we still take it in, two days later, they repeat the violation.
Okay.
Your pictures are worth a thousand words, right? And like what the people are doing, right?
Good, it looks good.
Right, yeah.
Um, the way the code reads right now though, um, it does have some limitations, so it says they can't be in the right of way. Well, most of the businesses on Frank Street don't have any of their own properties, so they wouldn't be able to have a sign. Per, like, right now, they're not allowed to anyway, but we've kind of let it slide. When I started, as long as it was tucked under the eve of the building to right against the building, they were allowed to have it. Uh, so, and I know, uh, Kevin, you've been involved in, with both the chamber and D R B. And, uh, if you want to offer any insight.
I, I would just say that they, if, for the most part, hundred percent, the chamber members are in favor of. The policy being enforced much more than it is right now. And it's really only the people that are violating the rules that would be against it. And the lion's share of everybody says, yeah, we need to think things up and rethink about things because when Covid came, there was a lot of. Looking the other way and just letting people survive.
Right.
And, uh, I personally have been very much in favor of there being a documentation process of some sort, so the city can tell. Well, that is a sign that we've seen and approved and it's altered or different, you just let them know it's all different than that. I think there's just enforcing the rules as is right now, we just do a lot to make everybody more professional. And you guys need a few tools to help with that. I think chambers pretty, the chambers in favor of new programs. Troy might have a different summarization, but you, Troy?
Well, the downtown steering committee is, I believe, fully supportive of it as well.
You can, people bring their signs to the design review board and get some sort of a stamp of approval. But they, um, I know my daughter who works downtown. Too often has someone come in because they've fallen over a sign and has a, have a bloody knee. And so she'll give them bandages. And, um, they do this because there's no enforcement, zero enforcement. Or if they were getting fines for it, they would stop.
I'm worried about destroying the chamber, also stores, I think the safety issue is a big thing that I think. Sort of about is there, we're allowing signs be in the public right of way.
I think they could sue the city. It wouldn't sue probably the business.
It's who everybody.
It's who everybody sees definitely.
Well, and like Maggie was saying, though, the problem is that our system is broken. Because we can't really enforce, because all I do is pull them in and then put them back out and you gotta start the process over again. So we need something that again, by getting, having to be approved or then they're gone, you know, then, then you can grab them. They're not approved.
Now, you, are you, I know you brought this up a few times, but are you waiting for, to hear some more from us that say, yes, please move forward and present a? Yeah, what do you need code change?
Um, yeah, A, like would you support a permit process? And B, would you, the code as is would not allow most signs on Frank Street. Um, would you want the code amendment to allow some, the signs as long as they're tucked? Under the eve of the building or just keep it as is? And if you have a zero watt line structure, but you don't get, your sign is on your building.
It seems like your sign on your building should be enough. People walk down, we move the sign, some of them are falling down because they're looking up.
So like there are some businesses that do have frontage, so on the highway where they could have a sign on their property. Uh, Posey is a good example, they own that portion that's right on the corner, that is actually not sidewalk. Um, and so that there are some businesses that would still be able to have them, it's just. We've kind of allowed it over the years, it's tucked back to you. So that was my other question, I guess, to you is, oh, yes, thank you, sorry, perm.
Oh, I was just gonna, yeah, I was just gonna throw in there that, yeah, it was, um, it was a tough love kind of conversation that the chamber board had. Cause some of the members at the room was uncomfortable because they have A-frames out actively on the sidewalk while we were talking about it. Um, but they all understood this sort of absurdity of all the hoops and jumps and things you need to do to get your blade signed up. And get that Bavarian font, but then people are just putting any old A-frame out. So the board totally understood the need for enforcement, um, and even one person admitted. I got an A-frame because I saw my next door neighbor got one. So I've seen this sort of like one-up thing that happens where someone gets one and they see it and they see it for a week and it's still up. And nobody got in trouble, so it must be okay, uh, the city must allow that now, so I'm gonna get one too. And then they get bigger, uh, and then they kind of take. Uh, and then they kind of take over. Um, and then, of course, you know, when they're out in certain places, um, they are um. Uh, a liability and um, I know I'm like, I always share this story because it's just a horrible story, but. This is my gloom and doom story. When I worked at Fisherman's Wharf, a little boy was killed by one of these statues from this building. They always put out these large A-frames and statues and stuff and it tipped over and fell and it killed him. Um, and so there is a real threat to some of this stuff, especially if it starts escalating beyond A-frames and starts becoming racks of clothes. Or a statue or a display case with something in it. So it really can really escalate. So. Um, the 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 board understood the need for um, for uh. For some for for enforcement and coming from the city and that that would really help make things even because of the things that even playing field. Um, but they're also understanding that there's some, you know, like the Mottler Building and the Obertal. That, you know, there's multiple businesses in there that are all trying to vie for eyes. So having some carve-outs for. You know, an approval process that for private property as well, where where you can have it, but still needing to be a process. Um, so it's in compliance and you're spending as much time on that A-frame as you did on the sign on the exterior of the building. And that's a long sign. Thank you for your time.
Changing the code, like, like you said, it's, I'm sorry if you don't have private property, you own that space in front. If you do, you can do this. You can submit for a sign. It's just the nature of what your business is, right? To make it more clear and concise, but. Have the five hundred dollar fines, they get written. I mean, it's great. Nothing less than five hundred dollars.
Sounds like we got it.
Have direction. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
In the olden days, there weren't any signs. It's all clear. Yeah.
Cemetery expansion discussion.
I'll also try to keep this short term.
Shorter than the packet?
We can ask.
Yes.
Just because I don't have any recommended changes and if you guys didn't see anything that needed to be changed. We're good for a year and we can revisit it next year. Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yep, sound good.
Just save us fifteen minutes.
Okay, so hi, level, just kind of walk through the history here. Um. Originally, we've had a hundred thousand dollars budgeted in the general fund for cemetery improvements for futures. Last year, we moved forward with a contract. We selected place landscape architecture. And before they even pulled together the scope and fee for their professional services agreement, they came back to us and said. I don't know what you're looking at for a hundred thousand dollars. We're looking at this uh to be six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So do you want to pause on our professional services agreement before you get us under contract to design this? So, uh. The cost estimate that we had used was from the twenty twenty-two cemetery master plan. And really, as we went through this process with place, we realized the cost estimates that we have from the twenty-two cemetery master plan are just not very accurate. So we move forward with the contract with place landscape architecture. Had them provide the feasibility study that's included in your packet. That's really the bulk of what I'm wanting to talk about tonight, but they did also include the other cemetery master plan, just for your reference. Um, I know a lot of the discussion we've had about what to do at the cemetery has revolved around the pre-installed liners. And that came out of that cemetery master plan. Uh. So really quick, that's kind of the, the, the background, the history. I also will jump over the financial side so you just understand. Why we have a hundred thousand dollars, why we don't have a ton of additional funding for improvements out there at this time. Uh. So improvements in the cemetery are funded through the general fund. And then when we have a lot sale, we split the revenue fifty percent goes to the general fund. For the ongoing operations of the cemetery now and fifty percent goes to the endowment fund. And Chantel helped me with this beforehand, just so I'm holding on the same page, but the purpose of our endowment fund, it's not used right now. Uh, for any of the maintenance at the cemetery, but it's more set up so that we're building reserves. So once the cemetery is full. We would have the endowment fund to live off the interest for the ongoing maintenance of the cemetery. So. With that, it's general fund dollars that fund improvements at the cemetery. Uh. Obviously, our, our general fund title has a lot of demand on it. And so a hundred thousand dollars has been the dollar amount that we've had in there for a while. Um.
That's total, that's not yearly?
It's been a carryover item.
Okay.
Yeah, not, so not yearly.
Okay.
Just sorry for the actual improvement.
Right, 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 okay.
It's just been a carryover item.
Okay.
But it wasn't, sorry, well.
The hundred K was designed for these professional service agreements. We knew once we got into actual construction, we were gonna need to.
Okay, well, that's the big question. It's like, what is a hundred thousand dollars uh get you? Yeah, what was that even?
That was for.
Originally it was, but I don't think, yeah, keep going, Andy.
Fixing the, fixing the roads in the cemetery. Wouldn't even cover a hundred grand anyways.
Uh. So ultimately, we have the feasibility study that was provided to you. There, basically, they took out, um. Different components of the project. They did add a few things into it just to give us some preliminary cost estimates. Um, but really, the biggest challenge we have at the cemetery right now is we are completely out of full burial lots. And that's the, we have a waiting list of people who are wanting to purchase lots. We don't have any currently available. Um, and as you probably saw in the feasibility study, they broke down what factors into the costs of different improvements out there. Uh, so it was the section one point eight where we looked at. Should pull it up before I actually say what it was titled. That's the uh improving the unimproved, utilizing the existing turf area. So. Um. This area has been the biggest point of contention as we've talked about making approvals to the cemetery because this is where the cemetery master plan. Propose having the pre-installed liners. Uh. Again, the cost estimates from the master plan are really low. Like the projects that we've completed out there have been extremely low compared to the cost estimates in here. And the pre-installed liners were over a million dollars uh to just pre-install the liners. So where we're sitting in the capital demand right now, we don't have the capital to install these liners. Uh. Again, knowing that we are completely out of lots, we have a waiting list of people wanting to purchase. And then also that we split the revenue from that with a portion going to the endowment fund. I think it's important that we do continue to have some lots available. For people in our community to purchase. And the most cost-effective way that we can go about doing so right now is improving or replating and installing. Uh, or sorry, replating and having more burial lots in the existing landscaped area. As opposed to the area that was shown in the master plan for those. Uh, oh.
Are you a fan of the pre-installed liners?
That's a much bigger question.
Well, it's a million dollar question.
I think, I think at this point. The pre-installed liners aren't the conversation we need to have yet because we need to have more lots available and I don't think it makes sense. Uh, regardless of whether or not we do the pre-installed liners, I don't think that this area makes sense to be the location where the pre-installed liners go. So in order to install those, you excavate the entire area and sell the liners and then you have to re-landstate. We already have landscaping in this location and nothing else that's located here. And so I, I think.
Let me rephrase my question. So are we waiting uh for a million dollars to do these pre-installed liners? Before we can get to the waiting list? Like, what's the holdup for the waiting list? Is it the, is it the million dollars for the liners or what is it that we don't have?
We don't have.
Lots, right?
We don't have any lots at all.
Okay.
So this is an opportunity that we have space, that's already landscaped, that already had irrigation that serves it. All that we need to do here is replat this area because it was originally planted for the smaller pre-installed liners. So we need to replat it, which includes the survey. And then there's some other uh irrigation modifications just because then the. Lot size would change, so we need to relocate irrigation. But in total, from the cost estimate and the feasibility study, it was sixty thousand dollars worth of improvements in order to make these all sellable lots. For this year, so.
So that would add, that would solve the issue of more lots, more burial lots.
Yeah, we, yes.
Sixty.
And that's kind of the crux of the whole thing, you know, that's really the point.
So how, how many would there be?
Yeah, I shouldn't know this. I'm sorry, I don't.
Roughly.
Me, one, two, three, or try to.
Because we're not, they're not moving as quickly as they used to either, though, right? I mean, we're getting more cremation and.
We are getting quite a few cremation, but one of the other limiting factors is the lots that we had available. Were not desirable locations. They were primarily near the maintenance building.
We sold all those out, right? That was, that's the year we sold. We even, yeah.
That's how, yeah, that's why we're out.
Yeah.
Um, so I know that there's some people that were on the waiting list even before we were fully sold out just because they didn't like the locations of what we had left. They weren't desirable locations. Um.
So sixty grand and then the irrigation, that was a point. We're running it twenty-four hours. Are we really running it twenty-four hours a day? Okay.
Just because the, the flow is so low, it just has to keep going.
Uh, it's primarily, yeah, yeah, because we can't run multiple zones at one time just because of the size name you have up there.
Yeah, so that's, so that's, that's one part of it, right? Seems that that stuck out. And then the second part is, I didn't see an evaluation of the new system will save us how much water? Will it save us water or it's just bigger and it's just the same amount of water, twenty-four hours a day or eight hours a day?
Yeah.
Is there an evaluation of that? Like, who cares? I mean, if it's twenty-four hours.
Well, generally, what we have right there right now is a, it's like a smart watering system based off the weather, adjusting the amount of water. It's not going to change like we're not, we're not necessarily going to reduce our water consumption by making any improvements, but more, it would actually allow us to expand this space we irrigate. Because right now we're max on the number of zones for the duration. In order to actually water everything, I think it actually is twenty-eight hours a day we're watering.
That sounds like city speech, man. That's government.
It's like a full, complete. No, I'm gonna confuse myself and say this. It, it's watering twenty-four hours.
Right, yeah.
So can we add, can we add, do we take a part of what they're, they're saying to do or they're, what they're, what they're saying we need to do is all of it redone? In that number in your packet. I can't remember, like, can we, we do just add on to this part, sixty thousand bucks for the new stuff? More irrigation for this and then it's just, yeah, we have to redo all of it, yeah.
So we became a lot, where all those other components factored in was originally, the cemetery master plan showed uh this area. This is the unplatted, unimproved area. This is where they showed the cemetery expanding out to.
Right.
For the non-pre-installed liners, just like your typical operation and the nature of this area. Being where we would do the pre-installed liners. With that, this is where we're looking at like, okay, our existing irrigation system isn't sufficient to serve this area because there's too much. Demand per zone.
Yeah.
To actually factor into an entire day. That's where it was like for twenty-eight hours we would need to water per day. Uh. So that's where, when they priced out the irrigation improvements, it became extremely expensive. And then what were some of the other? The irrigation was the biggest one for this area. So I, I know there's been a lot of concern about the pre-installed liners and people very interested in that. And that's why I'm wanting to say. Just because we move forward with refiling this area that's in the existing landscaping. It does not eliminate the potential for those in the future. Instead, we would just do those in this area that's unimproved because we're gonna have to go excavate the entire day anyway.
Right.
That would be the location. If we do that in the future, we should do so, in my opinion.
Makes so much sense.
Yeah.
So Andy, if we do replat and put in uh more plots there. What does that look like to the waiting list? Does that completely negate the, like, is everyone on the waiting list gonna be able to purchase lots there and?
Yeah, I, I don't remember how many people on the waiting list, like. I think less than ten.
Okay, alright. Yeah.
Okay, so the roads, we just, we, like you mentioned early on about the legacy um. Fund paying for this when everything's full, we wanna have, we wanna get it paid for in the interest. That's, it's a great plan, right? The roads, so a couple hundred thousand dollars to pay asphalt the roads, because we know roads are costly and it seems like. They're just gonna cover it. I mean, they're gonna compress it. I mean, are they fully gonna do drainage? I mean, are they gonna really build these roads? Do they need a full? Fixing, price seemed reasonable. But for long-term roads.
They're just dirt roads.
Don't chip to them. I don't wanna hear about the chip feel.
They're just dirt roads, yeah.
Yeah, and they, that keep works.
Asphalting.
They work, but I, I like, I like, yeah, they said asphalt, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
But like people like that are older or like wheelchair, they're trying to get, it's, it's kind of rocky. If we can make it nice, well, this is what was in the report. That's what they, we're selling us.
You're already with a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So as long as that's suitable, it seems like a low number for a long-term, even as long as that's covered in your, you know, future. When they're all sold, they're paying for it. The roads are, they're just costly, right?
They are and, and I'll be honest, I'm not sure what kind of road profile they were proposing in this cost estimate. I would have to get more information.
Yeah.
So I'd say this is like a very preliminary number.
So do you look at this as a phase one, phase two, phase three? Like you said, phase one is like getting these going, irrigation and. Opening these, these up and then phase two would be another, kind of for.
Yeah, that's kind of why we broke out these, that, that's why they broke out these options in the pool. Like this, just so we could look at the cost, what we have budgeted this year and the improvements that we could make. Like you're saying, yeah, I think definitely the first thing that we need to do is replat this area so that we do have lots for sale. Uh. I think the road improvements are important. We've also looked at adding, um. This is, this twenty-four thousand dollars in one point seven for the niches is just for the foundation for those. Um, but that is another location that we, we don't have a waiting list. We definitely still have niches available. Uh, but it's a location that we do have demand and so just planning in the future so that we have more niches before we run into a waiting list like this. So I'd say that. Um, uh, my perspective, the first and foremost, having more plots. Um, looking at road improvements out there and then the, at least the foundations for the niches are what I'm looking at as our top priority.
Irrigation for the, for the new plots, right?
Yeah. Yeah, once we. Once we have better timeline and what it would, what our timeline would be for the new unimproved area, definitely irrigation has to be.
Right, yeah.
What about, I think that one point eight is hope to go here with establishing more lots. What about increasing the funding for the cemetery out of general fund like the two hundred thousand? I mean, you know, that might help us carry.
Yeah.
Get farther into it.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's very much something that we can continue to do and have. Uh. Yeah, more capital funding for the cemetery from the general fund. More just looking at order of magnitude. Kind of why I brought that up is like. When off the bat, we're like six hundred eighty thousand dollars. That's not what's currently budgeted in the general fund would have in the future.
Does the cost of the plots even matter? Because we, we got, you evaluated and we look at it and we say, well, these are really, really a great offering for, for the price. We, this is a really. Listen, for the view and the, I mean, it's, it's, it's beautiful, right? And it's, there's a premium and it's, they're paying a good. Less expensive price than W, right? Or Redman, whatever. But, but was that, would those prices considered, took into consideration? The hundred thousand dollars or the seven hundred twenty-four thousand dollars? Do we need to raise those prices? This is the question.
So the, if you remember the rate fee structure that was set at the end of this, I don't know, at the end of twenty twenty-four. We did have really substantial rate increases to all the cemeteries, like. I want to say off the bat, like roughly a hundred percent increase across the board, like we raised rates substantially. That wasn't completed under a full financial analysis in the cemetery. That was just completed by evaluating other rates at cemeteries in the area.
Yeah.
Um, Shandala, we're just talking, it is something that we do wanna do is have more of a financial analysis completed for the cemetery. Um. But for now, that was kind of our best starting point we had for the rates. It's just.
Yeah.
At least looking at the competition with Allen and uh. Realize that rates are very low.
Way too slow for too long and, yeah. And it's hard to build up your. That reserve if, if you're uh, if you don't keep that pricing up, then change.
Just so I'm clear, uh, Shantel, this might be a question for you. So the, the maintenance and operation for the cemetery can only be. Used out of the general fund?
Well, that's what the, the city currently does. The endowment fund, the definition of an endowment is that you have received money from someone.
Right.
At some point in time and we've looked back in history, we can't even figure out when the endowment fund started.
Hmm.
It's that long ago. But normally, when an endowment is given to the city, you can't even use the principle of that endowment.
Right.
It goes in, it gets locked up. And so the city made a decision at some point to say, okay, well, we need more than this endowment, but this is a big start. And so they started with every sale. They split it fifty-fifty. Now, it's just the sale of the actual plot.
Right.
They sell other things, masons, headstones, there's open and closed fees, all the other things happen. All of that, a hundred percent of that revenue goes into the general fund. Even with that, even maintenance of maintaining that cemetery. Even with that, even maintenance of maintaining that cemetery staff costs, it seems right.
Right.
Every year.
I was curious if, yeah, if other, other funds.
We could start it in the endowment fund, but what we don't know is what did it start with? And then we're just shooting ourselves in the foot for the future, having something that actually generates interest revenue to maintain.
And, and are you also asking if there's any other funds available?
Right.
Right, well, well, you can't use lodging tax.
That's right, sorry.
No, they're, they're lodging out there.
And, 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 and you can't use any of your enterprise fund.
Okay, alright.
They're all specific.
Alright, that's what I wanted to.
Your general fund is a typical fund that everyone funds their cemetery.
Okay, alright.
Working guys out there for.
But we could, we could increase the fund that we take out of the general fund, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
And, and like Andy said, rates were increased, but we don't have anything to sell.
Right.
We need to.
Right.
Get the land.
Right, to sell stuff.
Improve the land so we can actually sell.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think for having that resource available for.
Yeah, I think I just need Andy to tell, tell us where we're at and how much a real number needs to be, because a hundred K is not gonna cover it. And I, I looked at the CIP and you're right, it said doing some niches and a couple of improvements, definitely not.
Not all that.
Which is like a minimum.
Yeah.
And, and this is a lot less, if I remember right, we were talking about several million dollars to do like the master plan work.
Oh, okay, good. Just the, just the liners are a million.
Yeah, right, you start with the liners themselves.
I, I like what you're suggesting. I think it's a reasonable approach. A, we should have an option for citizens who wanna bury their loved ones and right now we don't have for what some people prefer is a burial. Uh, so moving forward within budget we have, we can get inventory of lots. We can, uh, do maybe a little bit of gravel improvements for the road so that it's safe and, you know, easy to walk on. And then, then from there we can move forward. That would give us inventory for years, right?
Yeah.
It seems like that's totally reasonable. We don't have to make this into a bigger problem than it is.
Yeah. Mike wasn't here for that. That was such a great slide that showed how the years and like how many less people are wanting to be buried versus cremated.
Hmm.
It's, it's, it's a draw.
Definitely.
Right. And one more question. How many people went on the tour from Fridays?
It was just Sharon. Well, it's not me.
I'm, I'm sorry I missed it. I, I totally missed the email and, and didn't, uh, yeah, I was really interested in.
It was really good.
Tour.
Really.
Yep, no problem.
Would you be, would you be up for doing it, uh, another tour sometime?
Good.
I missed that too, yeah.
Yeah, I'll look to Andrea. She can help set one of the.
Um, has everybody been called that just hasn't used their plot? Um, and maybe they don't want it or didn't know their parents bought one or anything like that?
No, not my knowledge.
I think the gal, I can't even remember her name now, did that years ago when I bought ours over ten years ago. And, um, there were people that, um, had whoever the person was that was going to be buried there, they'd all moved and so they were buried somebody else and they didn't, they wanted to sell their plot back. I guess that was.
Angela did that research?
Yes, it was Angela. Yeah, that sticks.
Shandal, do you know what our endowment currently is?
Uh, about a hundred and fifty to seventy-five.
So it's not generating meaningful interest to do anything with. But it looks like they rejected, uh, about a years before it would fully fund. Well, before we would run out of land development opportunities there based on current rates. So I don't think, none of that jumped out to me as like a problem, except for that we don't have any options for some, some people.
Right.
Otherwise it's like, it'll play out nicely, uh, as we just go down the road, right?
At the current rate?
That's a good one. I mean, again, we still need to do that whole financial analysis just to be sure that we're on point with where it should be with our rates and then with the percentage split between general fund and the endowment fund just for the life of the cemetery.
Yeah, I think in master plan, I mean, they were talking about total buildout, it looks like seventy-five years from now. You know, there is a lot of land there depending on how you break it up.
Any questions? Okay, so direction, move forward, replat the, oh, not showing it, but replat the area that currently has grass over there.
Give us some plots.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Andy. Yeah, thank you.
Alright.
Anybody got anything for the good of the order for down the road or things that have bubbled to the surface before we take a break? Uh, I say let's take a break. I'll send it. Alright, I'll call the meeting of One More City Council for April eighth to order. Please stand in the part of allegiance. Shane, since it's your birthday, why don't you share it?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Zeke Reister.
Shane Thayer. Travis McMaster.
Mike Bedard.
I entertain a motion to excuse Ian Hesper from the meeting. Come on. Second. Okay, move in second and all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. We've got a consent agenda here and Sharon, you've got something you need to.
I just have one, a wrong month, um, on page. My gosh, four of six. Um, it says under council member reports, which was mine, um, second to the bottom line, instead of March, it should say April. That's it.
I think so.
We'll amend that minutes and with that amendment, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda amended.
Second.
And I've Shane, Sharon, I heard you, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. Comments from, from the public on items not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything they wanna speak to, EJ? On up?
Yeah. If we're on Zoom, no, no, no hands up, all hands up.
DJ Robinson, one twenty-six Commercial Street. Uh, thank you guys for having the conversation, how did your study session on uh, our immigrant population? I mean, you talked about something and I wanna kind of get on that one, find background. You talk about kids in school, we're worried about that. And right now I had the opportunity to work also at Alpine Lakes and also Wenatchee Valley. And we know our population we have in the school district here, Wenatchee Valley, I have the opportunity to work with college students and in the Mesa program, with minority students to hand, uh, underrepresented individuals. And right now, we're going through, if anyone has college kids, we just went through the transfer enrollment for colleges for four years. And U-Dub just finished on the fifth and I get the opportunity to spend time with these students and teach them how to put together their applications and their personal statements. These kids know that they have a target on their back. It's something we talk about, wanting to do their personal statements. When we're talking about how do you get paid for this and you'll, we know you can't use FASA, so you're gonna use WASSA because that's what they're gonna say to us. They know from the day that they're introduced into their society and their community, they know that they have targets on, not from everybody, but they know they have targets on their backs. So it's not about giving them any reassurance and they've learned from day one. And it's kinda what we relate to because we just went through COVID. We went through a Black Lives Matter, uh, kind of movement. And we started hearing about, well, we, did you hear parents talk to their kids, African-American parents talk to their kids about driving? And what do you do? And it's just a gift and you're just like, okay, well, that's their experience because they have to learn that at that age and we understood that. And these kids, be them third graders or second graders at, at, uh, at Shasta Drive or element, or kindergartners or twenty-one, eighteen, seventeen-year-olds at the college. They know that in communities like they're in, because it is just a fact that they're alive right now, they have a target on their back, not from everybody. And so when we, when we asked about, but at the same time, they're doing their personal statements for U-Dub right now and they're trying to get to STEM, uh, STEM schools. And they're doing this right now, knowing they have that target on their back. Knowing that eight years ago, they had DACA removed from them. How many of those personal statements I read, they talked about? I was right at the beginning, eight years ago. So they were in seventh grade and they were starting that DACA process. Because they were finally eligible to, and they had that removed from it. Which was the legal right, legal way of getting their citizenship, because they came as children, as infants. And so there was that process that was starting in place. And so they got, they were ready to do that, something their parents had given them hope for, when you need to give them hope for. And we still give them hope for. But they had that removed. Oh, so that means I'm not getting that federal aid that I need for, for, for this college. I can't go through the FASA program. Alright, that's fine. And so we as a state said, hey, we're gonna do this WASSA program and we did that. And so it's something that they work for. Hey, I still go to college. I know I have that target on my back. I understand the distinction between federal and state and, uh, and county and what city I am. They understand that. They have to understand that at age four, five, six years old, when they're starting to introduce them to our society and to their communities. And they don't care, think of it as a burden. Growing up, I didn't think of it as a burden that I had to do certain things where I was gonna get pulled over. It was just part of who you are. And you still go, keep moving through and you keep on reaching out and you know who has your back. And you know who's supporting you and doing what they can, not, they're not protecting you from it, but you're doing what you can. And that's all this discussion needs to be about. What can we do? What can we do? Not just take the target off their back, but also give them a little support so they know, you know what? You know, we might take help for this as well. There's an op, uh, there's a chance of us taking help in this as well, but they are taking it right now. They're having that stuff. They have to have that conversation and it's not just a one-time thing. It's a daily conversation that you have to have. So I just want you, as you go through and I'd like you, I thank you guys for having the conversation. I love to listen to everyone. And ask the questions. But I have to ask you to take that because it's not about just kids in elementary school. It's about kids that go on, so anytime they go to college, they're worried about what's going on next fall, but they also worry about this as well. It's for all. And we can just be there and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they wanna say that's not on the agenda? Anybody unwilling? Alright. Um, the next thing on our agenda is I'm gonna read a proclamation, uh, under the dark, International Dark Sky Week. Proclamation declaring April twenty-first to twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five is International Dark Sky Week. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of natural night skies are a shared heritage of all humankind and locally to the inhabitants of Leavenworth and are therefore worthy of celebration. Whereas the experience of standing beneath the starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and encourages a growing interest in sustainability and nature. And preserving the rich natural heritage and starry night skies of Leavenworth is important to its citizens. And the natural view of the night sky has been eroding in many nearby areas where generations are growing up with limited, if any, view of the wonders of the universe. And whereas the influx of development into the Wenatchee Valley and accompanying light pollution from aerial lighting fixtures has steadily been on the rise. When eighty percent of the world's population, including many people in the Wenatchee Valley, live under a dome of light pollution due to inefficient and wasted exterior lighting and may never experience the visual wonder or ecological and health benefits of living under a dark sky. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences which result in significant impacts on the ecology and human health of all communities. And whereas the Dark Sky International headquartered in the United States is the globally recognized authority on light pollution and has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution and provide free education, resources and solutions to the public to encourage the protection of and enjoyment of dark skies and responsible outdoor lighting. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Leavenworth, Washington, the week of April twenty-first to twenty-eight twenty twenty-five as International Dark Sky Week. The city of Leavenworth encourages residents to not only observe and ponder upon this important week, but also to enjoy the night sky, participate in the area's events and programs celebrating the night sky and promoting the ways in which organizations and communities are working to preserve it. To learn about light pollution and why it matters, types of lighting that are both neighbor and dark sky friendly and begin to implement, implement practices that will help us preserve our night sky for current and future generations. Sign this eighth day of April, twenty twenty-five. And I wanna hand this over to Paul Thomas, who is part of Wenatchee Valley Astronomy Club, one of the founding members and has been doing a lot of educational things and I think even can share a few things with us that are being planned, so.
Paul, thank you for coming up. Let me take your back. And here's, uh, you do that copy and she can get a picture of us here.
There you go. And yeah, I have a couple of minutes to tell us about what's going on.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, uh, Council. Thank you, uh, for the opportunity to speak today and for the dedication to making this proclamation a reality. International Dark Sky Week is a time to celebrate, observe and appreciate our dark sky heritage. From April twenty-first to twenty-eighth, look up, reflect and join in honoring the beauty of our night sky. This celebration can take many shapes, be it, uh, taking a simple pledge and linking a name to the cause on darksky.org backslash IDSW. Um, it can also be a week of education. Uh, by choosing to learn the many effects light pollution has on humans and our local ecosystems. A week of setting an example by looking at your own home to see if some changes need to be made. Uh, a week of advocacy by talking with neighbors, acquaintances about this issue through friendly conversation. A week of citizen science by recording and assisting researchers on how dark our sky, night skies are through globe at, uh, globeatnight.org. A week of promotion for local businesses linking astro tourism to our valley. Or a week of dark sky appreciation by stargazing in your yard or by attending, attending a Wenatchee Valley Astronomy Club event. Such as our inaugural Hattray Star Party on April twenty-seventh, nine thirty PM at the Leavenworth National Pitch Hattray. This monthly star party event welcomes all experience levels from seasoned astronomers with the telescope to those simply eager to look through a telescope. If you have a telescope gathering dust, bring it down and we'll help guide you through the night sky. WBAC will also have a booth at the Waste Loop Birthday Fair in Enchantment Park where we'll be looking safely at sun and its sunspots. So let's preserve this resource that connects us to the stars for ourselves, for future generations and for integrity of our valley by celebrating International Dark Sky Week and observing a truly dark sky. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Cool.
And what, what time was that again?
Yeah.
It's at, uh, nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty PM.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the twenty-sixth.
So very cool.
Yeah. And I do have, uh, our events that can pass out as well. And, uh, we also have other material literature, uh, prepared at the desk.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Paul.
Alright, our next presentation is PJ of the Humane Society.
Thank you, Mayor Floria and that Flori, Floria, the council members, uh, in spite of standing you up for our one-on-one meeting, appreciating the invite to, uh, to meet you all. Um, I am the new executive director at the Wenatchee Valley Humane Society. I just started on November fourth, so I'm still heading to know the area. Uh, I was born and raised in Portland and, um, we've done here just now, we're in the process of selling our farm in the Lamont Valley and trying to find a place to land, uh, out here. So it's chaos in my head right now because I have many things under contract. Um, anyway, I wanted to give you a little bit of background. Uh, I've been in the field for. Here, I will. Glad you're driving. Alright, so there's a few things there. Um, I've been in the field of animal welfare, kinda backed into it like the rest of us in animal welfare, most of us. Uh, this isn't what we thought we were gonna do when we grew up, but. Uh, I started at the Lamont Valley Humane Society, so I don't have to change the initials. Uh, and I was the panel manager there. I've been an adoption lead volunteer manager and ended up as the executive director there for, um, eight years. And led the Lamont Humane Society into a merger with Oregon Humane Society. I don't know how many of you have ever been through a merger with a company you've been in. Um, wow. Uh, that was a lot of work. Um. And, uh, we were actually the board and I were gonna start that and we were gonna launch it to our stakeholders in March of twenty twenty. Um, anyway, um, I have been, I found a passion for animal welfare. I was a horse crazy girl from birth, um, and. Cats, dogs, sheep, chickens, I love them all. Um, very passionate about the environment, so I really appreciate the night sky awareness and proclamation. Um, I spent a year of Ameripor in Vancouver Park, um, Park County. Uh, leading a team doing environmental restoration on the Salmon River, Salmon Creek watershed. Uh, about, gosh, twenty plus years ago. Uh, I can't even recognize, uh, the creek anymore. It's so shaded and grown and salmon are thriving there. So anyway, uh, I bring that, uh, to the community and, uh. Also a real commitment to, uh, the professionalism of the field of animal welfare. I've been on the, um, National Council for Animal Welfare Administrator Certification. Um, ever since I received my certification. So I love mentoring, which is a good thing because I might be close to one end or the other of my career. Uh, and I love mentoring, uh, leaders, uh, in the young adults that we have working for us. So, um, I have to click this.
I had to click it because I put something on. You should have the.
Okay, we'll see.
Okay.
Um, now I have to like, run, see what I'm showing you. These, um, stats that I'm showing you are from, uh, twenty twenty four, so, um, before I took over. Um, but I just wanted to kinda show you what we do. We take in, uh, roughly around four thousand animals a year. It was different from the shelter I come from. It was pretty balanced, dogs and cats here. It was about two thousand cats and around eighteen hundred dogs and a balance of rabbits, chickens, wandering goat, um, roosters. Rambles. Um, in that, uh. Let's see. Wait, were you there? Um, this is what's interesting to me. Um, in the first quarter, we're taking in so many more and the March numbers came in too late for me to add them to the slide. But it's the same trend in March. Our intake numbers are so far ahead of what they were last year. Um, and I'll get to why I think that some of the trends that are affecting that as we go through here. I don't wanna take up too much time on that slide. Um, this is another piece of the puzzle. So in twenty twenty four, we were a transfer in partner. We were, we had room in our community, we had room in the shelter to help other counties like Adams or Okanagan County with their overflow. Um, so they came in. Now we're a transfer out partner. Uh, since I've been there, our panel capacity for humane, uh, we don't wanna have every panel full, that's very stressful, very loud and very hard for our staff to be butt with. So there's a percentage number that we aim for. The percentage number for dog panels in the shelter is about forty dogs. I don't think we've been under forty-five and we're usually closer to fifty or over fifty since I've been there. So we're transferring dogs out. We're driving them over to the west side. We're driving them down the Oregon. Um, there's a, there's a real interesting, um, thing that's happening here. Uh, so let me, why? Um, there's a lot of things that contribute and I'm just sharing this with you. So I think a lot of people don't really get the complexity of the animal welfare industry, but it is as complex as, as what you all are doing. No shade, but it is as complex as what you're doing trying to run a city. There are so many interconnected patterns and, and, uh. Obstacles towards keeping pets and people together as there are keeping people in housing together. As there are keeping people and healthcare together. So how many of you have a pet in the room? How many of you've acquired a pet since twenty, in the last five years? Has it been easy for you to get that pet into the vet? Yeah. Uh, so since the pandemic, there's been more veterinaries retiring. Uh, more veterinaries selling their practice to national, uh, corporations like the Mars Company. Um, you know, you see the, um. The chain veterinary practices. The cost of pet care, our veterinary care has been rising far faster than just about anything else. Uh, it's gone up since twenty twenty-two in the last two years, really. It's gone up thirty-six percent. I don't know a single person whose wage has gone up thirty-six percent in two years. So when you get into a vet, you also have a really hard time affording the vet. So we're finding that some of our pets are coming into us because people can't afford the vet care. A lot of our pets are coming into us because they couldn't get their pet in to get it spayed or neutered.
Yeah.
So there's oopsie litters happening, cats and dogs. We're having puppies come in locally from local pets. These are not like. Backyard breeders, irresponsible breeders, scampage, quip breeders. These are just people who couldn't get their pets fixed. Uh, we had one man came into the shelter last month. Uh, his dog was pregnant for the fourth time. The three times before that he had brought us every litter, but he hadn't brought them to us real early. He waited for them to get like undersocialized teenagers and that brought them to us. Um, yeah, it was hard. Um, he wanted to get his dog spayed. He didn't want her to keep having puppies. So the last time he came in, we're like, you know what? We're gonna send you over to the clinic and we're gonna get your dog spayed and we're gonna have no more puppies. You're gonna have no more puppies. We took care of that because it was cheaper than another litter of undersocialized teenagers.
Hmm.
Um, so that's, um, the challenge. So the challenge as it relates to veterinary care. Is also that there's a national shortage in veterinarians and licensed vets acts. So in most of twenty twenty-four, we didn't have a veterinarian on staff. We had contract veterinarians, very expensive, um, and contract vet techs, also very expensive. And so we could only get them in a couple of days a week, two to three days a week, just to deal with the shelter pets that we were caring for and the spay neuter needs that we had. We were unable to provide the wellness services and the spay neuter services to the community at the rate that we wanted to and that the community needs. So we were a limiting factor along with everybody else. Um, we have since hired, uh, Dr. Bozart, who is, uh, lives here in Leavenworth. She is a jewel. Um, I'm so proud to have her. She has, uh, great experience in emergency vet care and is finding affection for shelter medicine. Uh, I still don't have licensed vet tech on staff. So if any of you know licensed vet tech that you admire and like working with and all those good things, we're dangerous, they're licensed. Uh, send them my way. Uh, we're a great team. Uh, until we had a licensed vet tech, Dr. Bozart, empty surgeries. So she can do wellness visits and a vet assistant can work with that. But we wanna be able to do spay neuter surgeries. We wanna be able to provide the community with, uh, the vet care that they need. Uh, to the extent that we have a beautiful clinic built, you need to staff it. Um, so that's also led to some of the other conflicts. I know some of you follow maybe on social media. Might have seen once or twice that there was some controversy around the Humane Society. Um, before I took over, there was a lot of leadership change over the last five years. And it's created some instability, some chaos and some challenging working conditions. So my primary focus was really to just then stabilize the programs and stabilize the staff and give them the support that they needed. We're getting there, um, but the next step is getting the clinic fully staffed. So one of the cool things that's happened though. Um, is the Community Cat Program. The Community Cat Program is also known as TNR, Trap Neuter Return. Uh, it's also known as, what else do we know? That's feral cats. People will call these sometimes. But, uh, they're not necessarily feral. That's a cat that masquerades as a, you know, cat shaped raccoon. Um, they're born wild. They are wild. They don't wanna be a pet and they don't know how to be a pet. But they also reproduce in the community. They create a lot of, uh, conflict between community members. And that's probably sometimes where it might end up, uh, up here catching your interest is when the neighbors are fighting with each other and the cats are producing. Um, the way to manage that is to do the trap, neuter and return, or say, uh, and return. You can't just take them all out. Um, if anybody here, and you know, there's at least one sign this year. Uh, if you understand population biology, if you're a rancher or a farmer and you don't like the coyotes on your property. You kill, to poison, remove, trap, whatever, all the coyotes on your property. What happens next year? You have more. Because the neighboring coyotes see, hey, there's a lot of resources. There's a ton of goats over there that are not getting eaten. I'm moving over there. Cause there's a lot to eat. I'm getting a lot to eat, so I'm gonna have more babies. My babies are gonna survive because I can feed them more. And all of a sudden you have a population explosion. So this is not the solution for coyotes. But the solution for cats who live with us in, in our urban areas is to take the cats in. I call it alien abduction for cats. They get trapped, they get covered up with a blanket, taken in a vehicle somewhere far away. They're stated. They wake up, they're let out of the trap, missing a couple of parts. Now what happened? Uh, so alien abduction is the answer. And the, what you have then is the cats are go put back to where they were, where they were living and using the resources. And they continue to use those resources so other cats don't move in, but those cats are not reproducing. So you're not having this swelling, swelling, swelling population. And you're not having the nuisance behaviors that generally happen when cats are out in public looking for love, fighting over love. Yeah, well, so those are, uh, a big, big issue for us and one of the, um. Primary things that I'm really passionate about getting under control. So we've got some really cool things coming that I can't talk about right now because I don't have the donors lined up for it, but they're waiting. Uh, for a meeting later this month to get, um, some funding going. Right now we provide those surgeries in our clinic, uh, as we can open, um, the clinic appointments. We do those for forty-nine dollars. Into the vet. That's the cost of the supplies. That's the cost of the suture material, the medications and the vaccinations that we give them while they're, while they're under. Um, and we provide them with, uh, long-acting antibiotic injection if they come through with abscesses or wounds. Uh, we put them back out in the community. They've got a rabies vax. Uh, so they're also gonna be, uh, healthier for the community. Um, we do all that for forty-nine dollars, but if you've ever tried to trap a community cat. You've gone through the work of doing it, it's not easy, right? You gotta set up a trap. You gotta get the cat used to going in it and then you gotta like. Let the trigger go one night, the night before you've got your appointment down at the clinic and hope the cat goes in that night. And then it's there in the morning. You gotta get it down to the clinic in the morning. Then you gotta go back in the afternoon, pick it up, take it back, put it in your garage to let it recover overnight. Take it out in the morning to where you caught it and let it go again, right? That's a lot of work for a cat that it's not mine. So that's a lot of work. So I respect the fact that it's a lot of work. I'm gonna be working really hard to find, uh, resources. Whether it's grants, local donors, community donors who will fund a matching program to subsidize those. So that when somebody does all that work for us and gets them there, they're not also paying forty-nine dollars a cat, even though that's a lot. So that's some of what we do for the community. Other things we do, we have a pet food pantry once a month where we hand out, uh, pet food or, uh, and a variety of other supplies that are donated to us. We, uh, we have back out to folks who are in need. Uh, we also recently provided, um, free parvo testing, vaccination and rabies vaxes. To all of the dogs that were living in the mission, um. Uh, semi-house, managed houseless community. I don't even know all the right words to say for it. Um, our neighbors. Um, so they're folks who are living in some managed housing there or their friends who are living on the street. There's a lot of dogs next door and a gentleman came running to our door, uh, during our eight AM morning puddle. With his puppy in his arm pounding on the door. Um, his puppy was dying of parvo. Um, there was nothing we could do to save the puppy at that point, so we did, uh, offer a humane euthanasia for him. Uh, and then we asked if there were more puppies and there were three other puppies and a whole lot of unvaccinated dogs next door. So by the end of the week, we had, um. Responded to a couple of, uh, folks who thought their pets were having emergencies that weren't up, as it turns out, parvo. But helped them out. We gave vaccinations, uh, and offered free parvo test to any pup that had. The symptoms of parvo. Um, I wanna be able to do more of that in the community, um. We're working on that, uh, on a grant basis also. Uh, we just received a grant from, uh, National, uh, Pet Co. Love. To do, um, free, uh, vaccines at wellness clinics. Uh, we, uh, received, I think, two hundred. Uh, cat vaccine kits and two hundred dog vaccine kits. So we're looking forward to setting up, uh, as it comes, as it comes, um, clinics for that. Um, Washington state law does, uh, require that, uh, humane society that runs a veterinary clinic. Can only provide services to folks who are income qualified, which is that they're at eighty percent of the median, uh, income in the area. We ask people to simply attest to that fact, um, because we feel it's a. Not necessarily humane to have people have to bring in proof that, um, a lot of paperwork for that. Uh, and the TNR surgeries, because those are unknown pets, uh, they don't have to meet that standard. So we can do TNR community cat surgeries for any month of any means. Um, okay, so that's some of what we do in the community. What do we do for your community? This is what we did in the first quarter, which at first glance, might not look like we do a lot up here. But this is Officer Kelly Craig. Uh, she's just graduated, um, from the. Washington State Animal Control Academy, um, was nominated class president and then she's got a little plaque there, uh, being class president. She was the most senior officer at that training. Uh, she responded to one of those, that potentially dangerous dog case you see up there. Was a case of, um, aggressive dogs running at large in city limits. She responded up here. It belonged to a man who doesn't live in city limits and, um. He, uh, verbally threatened to blow her head up and pulled a weapon on her. So when you need us, you need us. Um, and she's amazing. And this is also the reason why our officers are all now wearing body cams. Um, because it seems like they're just dealing with stray dogs and we all deal with puppies and kittens. But the human animal bond can make people pretty, um. Emotional and can stir up, uh, a lot. So, um, I have a ton of respect for our officers, um, and really thought of them. Another thing I've been doing and talking with councils and mayors around, um, the jurisdictions that we serve. Is to let you all know that there's a lot more that happens behind that contract and what you're doing for. The citizens in your community by having a contract with us for animal control. Um, this allows citizens in your community, if they find a stray animal, to come and bring it to us. So the public can feel more comfortable if they're seeing an animal, um, at risk. If they see an animal that they think is being neglected, uh, if a health department comes across a hoarding situation. Um, if a stray dog fights someone and you don't know who the owner is, that animal, cat or dog, has to be quarantined for ten days. That's something that we can do in our shelter. So there's a lot of, um, random things in addition to, um, a dramatically rising number of, uh, dangerous and potentially dangerous dog cases that. That we're responding to. One up here, but it was a doozy. Um, and also, that said, so like. It can be scary. I also have been up here in Leavenworth quite a bit in your beautiful town, which everybody who comes to visit me in Wenatchee wants to go to Leavenworth. And so we come up here a lot. Um, you have an amazingly dog-friendly town. Um, when I'm up here, I'm watching the folks on the street and the tourists and the locals and, I mean, everybody is out with their dogs. And I was up here, um, staying at a cute little cabin in the woods up by Ski Hill. And we went out and we walked along the paths up there and it was beautiful, um. And there was not a lot of dog. There was not a lot of dog do on the trail. That's unique in my experience in the dog trails that I've been on around here. Um, I think you and the Apple Loop Trail are amazing at having, uh, responsible pet owners who pick out after their dogs, so. Didn't think that was a, a talking point for me, but there it is. Um. Last thing, we've been doing a lot of things around the community. Oh, and I wanted to say we are also as part of the um outreach events is we're looking at having other ways of having your presence in the community besides making a law enforcement presence. So we had our officers and staff were up at, there was like a community resources event up here. Uh, they came up, they had a great time. They brought a dog, so everybody wanted to come visit their booth. Um, and we're invited back for another one, I think, in the near future uh that's happening. So opportunities like that, opportunities to reach out to uh students. Um, we just hosted a couple of uh three kids for a week from clinical prep that came to like intern shadow and learn about animal control and our behavior modification team, our shelter team, our clinic team, and also our social media marketing, which kids were really interested in. So. Um, these are some of the events that we're doing. Um, we have uh coming up, we have a Save a Tiny Life, which is about foster kittens. The kittens are gonna start piling into our shelter any day now. They're already coming, but soon it'll be a giant tidal wave. Um. As part of this, we're having part of this, we're having some outreach events in the community. We had our first one at Yonder Cider uh a week or two ago. Uh, weeknight, um kittens, um kittens on tap. We brought some foster kittens for people to cuddle with. Uh, we did some education about community cats, about becoming a foster uh for us. We need lots of volunteers, particularly fosters. Um, and we gave a demonstration on how to be a bottle baby kitten. So we're doing that again uh Saturday um over in East Wenatchee at the Circle Five uh Winery. And hoping to find a place in each of the communities. So hoping to find a light-minded, you know, some someplace like that in Leavenworth, someplace in Shalane, so we can go around uh to communities and um and do some education and an opportunity to um appreciate a business and cuddle kittens. Who doesn't wanna do that? Um, and uh People and Pets Outdoors is certainly an initiative that um resonates with the Leavenworth uh ethos. Um, don't have events planned up here yet, but I would love to hear about ideas. Um, we're gonna be doing something in early June called Rock Pound. Um, over at something over by Quincy, which is like gonna, I guess there's amazing. I love geology, by the way, so I'm pumped about this. Um, where we're gonna have uh a wonderful older gentleman who does geology uh talks and bus tours for the Wenatchee Museum is gonna be out there talking about the geology enthusiastically, telling everybody everything they ever wanted to know about the area we're in. Um, and they'll be able to bring, people will be encouraged, of course, to bring their dogs and go for a little hike.
Is that ancient lakes?
Yes. I'm like, there's some cool thing over there. I also understand you have something called Potolee State Park. It's not on the road. Anyway, I am really loving the opportunity to get to know this area. I'm very much looking forward to it. Um, hopefully, we're gonna be landed on some property um somewhere. So. Any questions?
Can you quickly mention, I think it's still going on now, if you make a donation, um, Cataralero Bank and two other places are?
Yes, we have a, we have a match going on right now. Uh, it's actually a ten thousand dollar match altogether. Um, Cataralero Valley Bank was one of the donors to that match. Um, so it's gone out both in our direct mail and on our uh email and website. Um, so that is all part of the, well, there it was. That's all part of the Save a Tiny Life uh campaign. Um, and part of that, uh, part of that campaign will also be going towards these TNR um funds, which I wanna set up as matching grants for communities. So if we put up a thousand dollars and community members for cities or counties, whatever, and you match, like, we put up a thousand dollars, that's ten surgeries. You put up a thousand dollars, that's twenty surgeries. That's twenty cats we've pulled out that are not reproducing. So and I think we're gonna get a lot more than that uh funds-wise.
PJ, I had a question for you. Um, do I understand right that, cause you don't have a vet tech on staff, that your veterinarian doesn't have the capacity to do spade, spade work at all?
Right, you know, we're having to contract, uh, so we, we pay them for day work. And those with the license benefits.
Okay.
Trying to get on on staff so we can count on them.
Can people, can people sign up for that? Or is that?
Yeah, on our website, the um, the surgery openings um on our services dropdown, uh, it'll go out and there the openings are loaded two weeks at a time. So rolling uh two weeks. So you can go through and see if there are surgery spots open.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
It's probably better addressed in in private sometime or whatever, but if if you have feral cats or wildish cats in your area, how do you know if you've already tended to them?
That is such a great question. I'm so glad you asked, because usually I mention that. In addition, during part of the alien abduction thing, is you come back missing tip of your ear. So, um, it sounds like, it sounds very sad, but it's done while they're anesthetized while they're stated and anesthetized. It's cauterized, it's all good, but by the time they wake up, it's just a flat top ear instead of a round top ear.
Well, Mike and I's neighbor just moved out of state and she was the local cat whisperer. So we're gonna, our cats in our neighborhood now that Beth walked her.
Yeah, and sometimes you'll find that there are uh cats with a flat top ear available for adoption. They're perfectly friendly. It just means they came through the program as a young'un, um, and they got that deal. That was the price they paid and for the, for the cheap surgery. It's expensive.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to come up here.
All right, we will go on to our resolutions, ordinance, orders of other business. About minder that we are respectful of each other. We acknowledge it's okay to disagree. Um, prior to making any comments, you should be recognized by the chair. Um, address the council as a whole, not individuals. Keep your comments focused on the topic that's being discussed. First action item is ordinance seventeen oh seven, a quarterly budget amendment. Chantel.
Thank you, Matt. So council, this is your first amendment of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six um calendar budget, biennial budget, excuse me. Um, with this amendment, as noted, a lot of this is just recognizing where we landed in twenty twenty-four, realizing the um increased revenues in most of the funds. I believe there was one fund only that uh stormwater that came in under. I do have just a couple items, excuse me, water was under as well. All of those with water, though, most of that was related to project carryovers that that weren't happening. Um, I do have a couple items I wanna just note that I'm gonna be correcting in the lodging tax fund, the Front Street Restrooms Project. When we budgeted for this in twenty twenty-four, it was a pretty significant budget amount. However, it actually came short by about fifty thousand dollars of what the contract was at the time. And then in addition to that, we've been expanding quite a bit to provide the external restrooms. Um, to date with restrooms, inspections outside of the contractor's costs, advertising signage, we've already expended ninety-four thousand dollars. So at this, yeah. So at this point, we're, we're about a hundred and forty-five thousand. In talking with Andy, we still have, we have to keep the restrooms out there. So we're probably gonna be somewhere close to a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars when we're all said and done. And I'll bring that to you, um, when we, when we get to project completion. We'll amend the budget at that time. It is the lodging tax fund, so I'm not concerned about it, because there's plenty of funding in that fund to afford that. The other one I wanna note is the pool fund. Um, in your amendment, I was just recognizing the carryover of the ending fund balance to all go towards the pool equipment replacement, which is the capital line item. However, just this week, I did get the bill finally from the Shalane County Elections Office, which is a, an additional three thousand dollars for the election costs. So I'm gonna go ahead and incorporate that three thousand and then I'll put twenty thousand, two, two, three left over to the project fund for the pool. As noted in your write-up, a lot of this is project carryover. And there are, of course, council actions embedded. And then in a few of the funds, I did some adjustments based on how twenty twenty-four landed. In particular, you've got the garbage fund with increased revenues, the parking fund dramatically with a lot of increased revenues across different line items. We had uh new lots that we didn't have any data when we were developing the budget, for instance, Blue Amex, Horseshoe Lake and Glacier. So I've incorporated all those potential revenues and offset some of those with expenses, but most of it's going to the ending fund balance of the parking fund. Are there any questions on anything in particular?
I would entertain the motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance seventeen oh seven quarterly budget amendment.
Second. Moved by Shannon, seconded by Zeke. Any other questions? Seeing that, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. All right, next item is ordinance seventeen oh eight, mending the sanitary sewer usage charge.
All right, this is your final one. We talked about this at the last meeting. Uh, we did adjust our new resolution for the schools, the pool, and the nonprofits and churches. And these are the recommended changes from Attorney Graff Shrupp. Basically, what we're doing is just adding in the RCW language, which gives us flexibility to one, do what we're doing, but to also consider differences in the future if we wanna go down that road.
Questions? I'd entertain the motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance seventeen oh eight, amending sanitary sewer user charges.
Moved by Plant. Seconded by Trauma. Other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Again, passes unanimously. Next action is the Resolution ten twenty twenty-five. Again, this was one you saw in uh modified form um previously. This is the impacts on our forest service um by the current administration and the different impacts and what that means for us. And this was brought back by work by Zeke and, and along with Kara in adding in some of the known issues um dealing with lost revenues that were uh acknowledged um as well as, but it's basically, again, that impacts the kind of the triple damage that this would do, both because we are uh, as you know, with the fire issues, also with the enchantment area, the wilderness areas and our water quality issues. So um, questions or?
Yes, uh, Leavenworth City Council moves to approve Resolution ten twenty twenty-five impacts to our local community with U.S. Forests firings by the federal government.
Second. Moved by Mike, seconded by Zeke. Any other questions, comments?
I just wanna say, thanks for, for bringing this back and reworking the original resolution.
Anybody in the audience have anything? Nope. All right, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Again, passes unanimously. Um, next Cascade Medical Center parking agreement, Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. Uh, tonight you're being asked to approve a short amendment to our parking arrangement with Cascade Medical Center. Um, I included in this time, in this packet, uh, a, a more, a, a more detailed explanation for the rationale behind the changes requested by Cascade Medical. I also included the uh twenty twenty interreglement that we are mending tonight. Um, and basically, this is uh due to the fact that Cascade now has a Saturday morning clinic. They want some more flexibility with how they operate, um, and therefore they want us to be flexible with the enforcement. Um, then that's what this be basically details. It also brings them up to market rate for the uh reserved parking that the Cascade Medical Center has at the Bluewood Parking Lot. They have twenty-five stalls there. Uh, that parking lot is waitlisted uh for the permit stalls. Cascade Medical picks up about twenty-five of them. And in your rate fee schedule in twenty, at the end of twenty-four, um we input in a nonprofit discount of twenty percent. We also lowered the monthly rate for those stalls. Uh, so they are now paying a hundred dollars a month per stall, and the market rate is one twenty-five in that location. Um. And I wonder if that's the, uh, what's any question you may have?
Uh, and the point of full disclosure, while I don't have anything monetarily to gain from this, I am an employee of Cascade Medical and utilize those parking spots uh from time to time. If folks feel appropriate for me to uh recuse myself from the vote in the conversation, I'd be happy to do so.
You should recuse yourself.
I'll do that.
Promise we won't leave you out there.
Any questions?
Nope.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the twenty twenty in a local agreement between the city and Cascade Medical Center.
Moved by Zeke, seconded by, I heard Sharon first. It's right. I was gonna say you were, you're right. Just, you're, you're, your, your sound wave just didn't quite make it.
I was just quick, I heard you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Okay.
Bring Glendon.
Yeah, please, thank you, Andy. I never got a second in when I was on Zoom.
You voted, too.
We voted, yeah. All right. Twenty twenty-four street maintenance project acceptance, Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this is accepting the twenty twenty-four street maintenance project that was back stealing and feeding and repair on a few of our residential streets and this work on Front Street. Uh, the project commenced on September ninth and finished on September seventeenth with a contract total of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, rounding. Um, so you're just being asked to accept the project tonight so we can move forward with the closeout process.
I'm accepted.
Oh, that's very good.
No, this wasn't. This is separate.
Sorry, what, what are we doing? We're accepting this, something that already happened?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this historically has been on the consent agenda. Um, but it was brought to my attention that for council members who weren't here when we started these projects, it was more helpful if it was on the formal gen. It's really just a formality and accepting the project as complete. That way we can move forward with the closeout process.
Doesn't acceptance date also trigger the beginning of a warranty on a lot of your contracts?
It says.
It's again, just one of those things that has to happen.
We can do, we can extend the warranty by accepting the settlement.
Put off accepting it.
You're a quick learner.
I don't know, is there, is there any uh holdback on this one?
Uh, with damage.
Yeah, with damage.
So, see, they won't let you hold.
Their dated bonds, and we do have time even of having to.
So that's part of it. They want their money.
Is it fair to say that you're bringing this to us because you believe the project's complete? Correct, okay.
I could be more explicit, my items.
Uh, Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the twenty twenty-four street maintenance project and authorize the mayor to execute the associated final contract voucher certificate.
Okay, I'm ready to give it to Shane.
Come on. Cheater.
All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Okay, we've got a supplemental agreement to RH two engineering for the water transmission maintenance placement, Andy, again.
Yeah, so this is the services during construction contract with our engineering to oversee construction activities of this project. Um, I know you've heard a ton about this project. We've brought many different motions to you. But again, this is just overseeing the construction portion of the contract. Um, just for your reference, the, the total amount of the services during construction cost is about thirteen percent of the total project cost. We, the general rule of thumb is we're looking for that to be at or under fifteen percent. Really, the driver behind this cost is a hundred and seventy-five working days, a lot of seminals, and then a, just a lot of onsite inspection. Um, so that is what is driving this price up to again, I'm rounding, but the seven hundred.
again, I'm rounding, but the seven hundred eight thousand dollars associated with it. Um, RH two is the firm that designed it, so uh they will oh, they'll see the project through the entire life cycle from design through to construction, which is a big advantage for us. Andy, you have any questions?
Yeah, so we had these, they're uh it was a million, two hundred fifty seven thousand nine hundred and ten for the third overseeing contract. Go get that right.
Yeah, so that total, uh, the one point two million includes design and construction. So I think it was in the packet attachment where it detailed the breakdown between the two. So the initial uh design was, I'd have to look at it, five, five hundred thousand roughly. Uh, so it's seven hundred eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars for the construction observation for services during construction portion of the contract. Did I answer your question?
Well, I just, I saw that number. Um, anyway, the total is not to exceed one million, two hundred fifty seven thousand, but that's they're not building anything. They're just overseeing it, right?
Yeah, so that total amount is for the design plus the uh during construction.
Right, and that comes in at thirteen percent of the total construction costs?
I'm sorry, the services during construction portion is thirteen percent of the total construction cost. What we normally look at is fifteen percent for design, fifteen percent for construction.
Okay.
Please tell me if I'm making that more convenient.
No, like, cause it looks to me like I read this right. Um, the construction contract is what, five million dollar part, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. I just kind of was stuttered that it was that high. I mean, I, I really don't understand what they've got to do. I know it's a lot as far as managing this, this construction thing. But it still is a sticker shot. Over a million dollars to do that.
Yeah, understandable. Um, ho- honestly, that is the cost I expected this to be, and then also going through the cost segment and the breakdown of all those costs. It does make sense. It's a team of people that are overseeing this project. It's a pretty, I mean, for us, this is a massive project for a city of our size. Um, and this honestly is something we, we do not have the resources to do.
Right.
Um, we need their team to be able to oversee this for us.
Right. Okay.
And I guess the portion I was trying to make clear in the second paragraph of this right up is that this will be paid for by the low interest loan. So this cost is included in the portion that will be paid for by the low interest loan.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Your question.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number two to the professional service agreement with RH two Engineering Incorporated for the Water Transmission Main Replacement Wellsite to Mill Street Project, increasing the total not to deed amount to one million, two hundred fifty seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars.
Second. Moved by Shane, seconded by Mike. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Again, passes unanimously. Safe streets and roads for all, Andy.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the professional services agreement with Soma to complete uh safe streets and roads for all safety action plan. Um, as a reminder, this is driven by the uh grant agreement that we executed back in twenty twenty four with the uh Federal Highway Administration, and this is for us to develop a safety action plan that then, once approved, would allow us to apply for more grant funding for transportation improvement projects that increase the safety. Uh, so this is the first step in that process is needing to execute uh or, or approve a safety action plan. So Soma was selected, uh, we published an RQ, had two responses, and then held interviews with both of the two firms that submitted technical applications. Soma was selected as qualified, and therefore uh the professional services agreement with them is here for you to make, for them to prepare a safety action plan uh to then be reviewed and approved by the Federal Highway Administration. Andy, if you have any questions?
Just the first time we've done something like this to get, to unlock those monies?
It is.
Is there other opportunities? Do you see this as like this kind of new avenue to?
Yeah, this is a big trend. Um, so like the, the uh Shalanda Douglas Transportation Council, the Technical Advisory Committee, this is something we've talked a lot about. And this is something that all the local jurisdictions are now doing this year because it seems like the avenue that we're going to have for more transportation dollars to be opened up.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so once a project is identified in a safety action plan, I mean, this is a benefit for multiple reasons. One, it opens the grant dollars, but also two, it identifies safety issues. Um, and then proposes ways to mitigate those in our town, which is on its own a good deal. But then on the grant dollar side of things, um I'm gonna forget the name of the, I think it's called Target Zero. Target Zero Roadway Just or something like that is the name of the program for the US Department of Transportation. And then the Federal Highway Administration basically takes those dollars and realizes those directly to local agencies, so. We have to have this in place to open up and maybe those factors be available.
So Andy, are they gonna? What are they studying, the whole network in Leavenworth, like the whole traffic patterns from one downtown to the next?
Yeah, so everything within our jurisdiction.
Okay.
Yeah, look at your transportation data.
I believe there's a concerned citizen in our community. We make him aware that we're investing in this safe roads for lowering speeding in the neighborhoods. Sure.
When he reaches out.
Make sure Kara, when, when he reaches out.
Yeah, when he.
Or have Kara, this is a great Kara thing for safety and I love safety stuff, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was gonna ask, are they gonna address anything like Chumpstick Highway and Highway Two or Riverbend Drive and Highway Two?
Yeah, those are all within our jurisdiction. Yeah. So it'll be evaluated. I'm not saying that there's necessarily going to be improvements or anything there, but they will be evaluated.
So they should give us some idea of what, I mean, yeah, they would identify that and they would say, okay, here's some issues. These are what's, what's contributing to it, so it kind of clarifies what we're actually dealing with.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, this isn't looking at all at congestion, just purely safety issues. And some of those things too, yeah, they can make recommendations, but then we'll have to be in coordination with Washout to get their concerns on our plan as well for things that impact the state highway.
But so they look at things like adding a stoplight here or there or speed limits and all those things. Is that what this is also?
Right, well, first foremost, identifying safety issues. So looking at collision data and looking at uh other factors that contribute, um.
Corners that are ninety degrees or long, you know, the sweeping corners that can be taken faster, those kind of like, yeah.
Yeah, those types of things, and then they'll propose mitigation. Like, in order to make it more safe. So it may not be a stop sign, but anyway, they'll propose different mitigation.
Well, yeah, whatever they recommend.
Yeah, as we can take, we can look at those and take those guidance and do them or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I brought it up as far as the Riverbend thing is that I just see a real uh cluster with Kaway. The new businesses going in there, new hotel. Uh, I'm just thinking of, I mean, I drove over there the other day and looked around and we're not even, and maybe even a housing development, and it's all feeding into one intersection.
Yeah.
So that's why I was like, know something about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll look at their, their scope work is the entirety of our city.
Okay.
Well, Zeke, that begs the question, I mean, is this, is this gonna be too far out for them to look at it? Are we looking at, is that something we should be looking at now or discussing?
Something that we have on the CIP and the transportation improvement plan, yeah.
I mean, you know, yeah, I guess.
We are looking at that area too.
Carl, did they do this a few years back? Yeah, the intersection to, to do with the sewer system or out there?
Out in that area, yeah, but they did, had to do the traffic study before that, yeah, yeah.
But this is the first of this kind of we've done.
Of this.
Yeah, we have not been.
I entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign, execute a professional services agreement with Soma's for the safe streets and roads for all safety action plan with not to exceed amount of one hundred and thirty three thousand five hundred seventy nine dollars.
Second.
Inspired, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. They have the unanimous, thank you. Professional Service Agreement with Pacific Security, Selby.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I know that just in our last meeting, you approved uh you approved a professional services agreement with Pacific Security for our parking enforcement that goes through April of this year. Um, before you, tonight for your consideration and approval is uh updated contracts for both patrol and parking enforcement. Again, as Shannon said to you in Chief presented parking, we are uh we are reducing our reliance on Pacific Security with uh two new full-time parking enforcement officers, both of whom are, are on staff and being trained right now. So that aspect is down to thirty thousand dollars. We don't expect to exceed that thirty thousand and to use in that hog and if, if, as little as possible. Um, and then patrol, uh, there's no increase in cost for patrol. Um, in your packet, it does outline the schedule for patrol, usually Thursday, Saturdays, Sundays and uh Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays most of the year. Um, and that is a not to exceed amount of fifty three thousand one hundred ninety one dollars and twenty cents, and that is fully funded for lodging tax and the parking enforcement is fully funded from the parking antifreeze fund.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor, sorry, there's two motions here, which one? I got to vote, don't I?
Yeah, yeah.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Pacific Security for patrol services with a not to exceed amount of fifty three thousand one hundred ninety one dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
By Mike, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor, let me see your hands.
You don't have to.
Do you vote, do you? It passes unanimously.
Were you a yea or nay Travis?
He, he, he went up, but he just took him away.
You didn't ask me any questions. I kind of had a question.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I got it.
I thought we had those.
All right.
Well.
No, it's, it's, okay, we're good. I, 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 yes.
Uh, Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Pacific Security for parking enforcement services with a not to exceed amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Sharon got it.
All right, now, do you have a question on this one, Travis?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, nope, nope. All right, anybody else?
Can he ask the question anyway since we voted, just, so we know the question always?
Yeah, just, so fifty three thousand dollars is, it seems like it's a really good deal. I mean, they, they really do a lot.
Yeah.
And just in my head, I'm thinking, the Leavenworth taxi was forty nine thousand dollars for a couple of months, and this is a safety. Planting the seed on that one when the time comes.
We had.
Okay, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Again, passes unanimously. That wraps up our action items and now we'll get to report sharing.
Okay, on March twenty sixth, uh, was the last day for walking in the festal. We've had forty walkers participate fully in this early morning program. March twenty seventh, us walkers went to breakfast at the ends for our last hurrah for twenty twenty five. March twenty seventh, I also attended the Housing Advisory Meeting via Zoom and Zeke will have that report. I, on the April second, I attended the Planning Commission uh meeting at City Hall and uh due to a lack of a quorum, that meeting was canceled, so we all went home.
Yeah.
April fourth, I attended the cemetery tour with Selby, Andy and John Shons. It was super interesting, really, really interesting, and if they have another one, I'll go to that one too. Um, I, I really thought that was a great experience. I wish everybody had been there, but now you have a chance for everybody to be there.
You do, so.
On April eighth, um, uh, I guess that's today. I'm here for the council meeting and just a note. The monthly free community dinner at the United Methodist Church is scheduled, scheduled for next Tuesday, April fifteenth, five to seven. It's delicious. Um, stu- uh special huge big thank you to Andrea for all her help. Um, yesterday, um, I figured out how to get, or she figured out how to get me in the city email with the new changes. And she even had to come over to the house to do it, and then both of us uh girls together over to the proposed site for the annexation on Mill Street. Um, I'm so visual that, you know, I gotta be there to see this to really understand what's going on. So uh tomorrow night at City Hall in the council chambers, there'll be a wildfire workshop from five to seven. And on April thirtieth, from five to eight, the Chumstick Wildfire Stewardship Coalition, Stewardship Coalition um partners will hold a town hall meeting at the Snowy Owl Facility. Guest speaker will be um Mr. Hesper.
When is that again, Sharon?
That one is um April thirtieth.
Okay.
I'm getting a phone call on my hearing aids.
Take it.
I tech.
Is it buzzer?
I gotta stop that, yeah.
Yes.
I just gotta shut it off or something.
Wait.
Okay.
We live in the future. I regret I was unable to be there at the cemetery. I was uh en route back from Portland at that time. I will take advantage if there's another date uh available. Um, echoing what Sharon says about the dinners, they're scrumptious and that uh the town hall that Mr. Hesper, Dr. Hesper will be speaking at will be amazing. Other than that.
See. All right. Okay. Well. Um, I did, basically I worked with, only thing I've got to report is I worked uh with Kara on getting that data we wanted for that forest service thing, and I think uh that helped solidify the response because there was lots of good data out there to justify why we wanted this resolution. Um. Other than that, that's all I can think of, so.
Housing advisory meeting.
Advisory meeting.
Yeah.
The housing group.
Oh, is that like?
Yeah, yeah, March twenty seventh.
Okay. Um, we reviewed, so we went back over, thank you, went back over um the presentation and uh Carl gave us sort of an idea of where uh fifty five seventy six was in the legislature. And we talked, um, I honestly, I forgot to bring my notes from the advisory building uh meeting, so we also kind of clarified more issues about rattlesnake and rattlesnake property. Um, and there was one other proposal, but I can't think of it, so that's the end of my report.
Uh, I don't have any report other than I hope to see some of you at the BAM Film Fest on Thursday night.
All right, Travis. Um, I wasn't at the last city council meeting. I was traveling, um, but before that, on March eighteenth, I was at the Leavenworth Area Promotions Meeting. And um be prepared for a decrease in taxes this year. We've completely stopped uh communicating with Canada, which is, which is challenging because you always want to keep in touch, right? You want to say, hey, like, we're here when, when everything's open or back, you know, come, come visit us again. You want to keep in touch with them. It's been such a challenge, I think, in Jan- in February mostly with people trolling any sort of posts or anything we pushed out in Canada, and it's just it's negative and uh there are people in Canada are just saying bad things and about Leavenworth and just, this is, this is the state of what's going on with, with what's administration said to about Canada and this and that, so they're, they're not pleased with anything US and it just, it just, we're just caught in the crossfire, so we pulled back any sort of advertising with Canada, um, which Vancouver's a nice drive market for us, so it will affect us and the numbers are down and you look at.
You get a lot of Canadians normally.
A lot, a lot, right? And you think, look at Florida, you look at um people selling their condos that are Canadians, I mean, people are, they're, they're getting out, um, are not visiting, so other communities around the US are being affected by this and we are going to be one of them. We kind of are, we, we are one of them. Um, we may see that decrease in parking dollars, we'll see that decrease in lodging tax, we'll see, it will affect our, our little town. Um, so that was the, that was the crux of, of that that I want to pass along. Um, and I attended the, before, before I went out of town, my son and I went to the Leavenworth Film Festival. Back, packed, it was amazing. Anne Hesper did an amazing job as the board and spoke to, she's, she's such a, she's such a good speaker. And I, I don't see her in that, that light, so she did an amazing job and it, the films, if you see the list and you can see these films, it's, it's spine tingling. It's amazing. The, the entries from around the country and the world.
Um, even local.
Even local, yeah. Um, yeah, really cool stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had amazing halftime.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Intermission performance too.
Yeah, I've never, the River Dance, remember that got popular in like the nineties or eighties? I never saw the Irish, they had the, this group from Seattle came over and did it. These girls did an amazing job.
It was unbelievable.
Super cool, so I'm glad that's back for Leavenworth and Banff, of course, traveling to see some amazing film festivals as well, but yeah, so, okay.
Great, Mike.
Uh, I was out of country last two weeks, so nothing to report officially, but uh just on the note of a lot of topics we talked about with our, our governance, uh. a lot of topics we talked about with their our governance, uh local and federal and state. Uh, it was interesting being in a communist country for the first time I've ever been in one. And I had opportunity to talk to a lot of people. I I took the opportunity to talk to a lot of people. I asked them how they felt about their leadership and they 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 were clear that they weren't comfortable talking about it because they aren't allowed to talk about it. Uh, they're allowed to have an opinion and speak out about their leadership. And one gal even said it very clearly. She says, uh, it doesn't matter anyways because we have no say in the matter, so we just have learned to not care. Hmm, which is pretty crappy. So
We don't spite over her.
Yeah, so despite, you know, the challenges of of governance, which we all know can be challenging at a local level and everyone else, it's really cool that we get the opportunity to do it, so. That's positive. So on that, few
Good job.
For what it is.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
At least for now.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um I uh attended a port authority had uh they do a couple of times a year kind of economic development kind of discussions with governments and business officials and all, and they had one, um and it was interesting because it featured their work with Microsoft on the stuff down in Malaga and all of those new and what they're doing in Douglas County as well. So there's but what was fun for me is I, that's where I learned the actual job that Anne Hesberg's doing because she was one of the presenters. And for Microsoft and she's in charge of lining up, getting their properties lined up in a row and ready for, she gets them up to the the construction point. So she's oversees all of that in the eastern side of the state, basically. So so she was one of the presenters. So that was fun. Um, she is a good speaker and yeah, they
Yeah.
Have a good one there. But it was fun. There was a couple of others, one that took them to construction and 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 then uh an overall vice president of the area and and development of those uh data centers. So um it was interesting. And then uh it was mentioned, we um, I've been following that House bill fifty five seventy six and and we are one step away from actually having that become a law and it's I'm knock on wood, um it's early enough in the session that that will hopefully get a floor vote, and I think if we get a floor vote, we'll definitely get it passed. So that would give us, there are some first, our first real resources that we could throw at our housing issues, so.
Make a point. When you, when you started email, I spoke too soon, but then it's actually a good email. Like you said that last one, you're like, I guess.
Well, because I thought it was mad news. I thought it was going into, well, it it meant we had to go to another committee that I didn't realize. I had short circuited the process. And every time you go to a new committee, there's ones that get weeded out. Yeah, that's just, that's the process. They winnow them down. And so I was afraid going to another committee meant we not get a hearing. Interestingly enough, the lead, the way I learned that we actually were gonna get a hearing was when I got a text message from Airbnb saying they're trying to tax your vacation. And I'm going, I'm going, oh, we must have got a hearing because they wouldn't have bothered.
Was it that we're, they're trying to take away your right to have a
I think I got that.
And all I said, and when my testimony, I say, listen, we are not anti SDRs. I said, but we asked them to leave a little more behind so we can be here to welcome them when they come. I mean, that's what it's about. We need first homes. And you know, we're not denying you your vacation, but we're asking you to help us keep a community here for you when you come, so. Um, yeah, so anyway, knock on wood, let's hope we actually get some revenue that we can do some things with housing. Um, and that's the extent of mine. So I'll be.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to echo council member Waters, here's your reminder that tomorrow night in this room, starting at five o'clock, there will be a wildfire prepared in this workshop. Lot of presentations from Schland County Emergency Management that talk about evacuations. From our fire decree, they'll talk about how to put out a hard near home and your own property. Um, from the US Forest Service about fighting fires and how well connected these federal, state, local agencies are in the event of an emergency. Um, and I think there's a couple other smaller presentations as well. I haven't received presentations from them yet, but that's at five o'clock sharp. Now, in this, in this room tomorrow, hope to see a lot of people there.
Sounds excellent. Really good.
Uh, uh, at the downtown standard committee on April twenty second, Somus will presenting their early designs for the front street pedestrian plaza. I encourage folks, um I know we can't have a council quorum at the meeting, um but uh and I know we'll have presentation to council later on, um. But one in thing in particular of particular interest is the Royal Lady Plaza that they have designed, um kind of in front of Mouchen House and for underneath the Glock and Shpia. And uh I've already invited the Audubon Festival Association to attend the meeting on the twenty second so they can see their where what Royal Lady Plaza design and provide some feedback in this early iteration. Um, so that is at ten AM in this room on the twenty second.
So will that, will that be streamed online? Can we?
It will be on Zoom. If you just attend the webinar, then I would consider that, you know, participation from
Oh, yeah, we would be able to grab them first. Get out the other count, okay.
Um, those do not get posted onto YouTube generally. Uh, although we could make a special section for it. The parking department has officially moved into the new car wash um building. Kudos to our facilities and park staff. We did a phenomenal job renovating a disgusting into some very nice offices for our parking team. Uh, two bathrooms, the the office space, Shannon's got her own office, um we've got a bulletproof service window so that people can come up and yell at people about the tickets they don't see, they just don't deserve, they don't think they deserved. Um, and uh, no, it's it's really great. Um and then over time, some of our public work staff will be moving into the off shop where parking just vacated. And we've uh also last week issued an RFQ, request qualifications for downtown parking garage. And uh we are expecting responses by May fifth and then we'll go through a selection uh process and and hopefully bring a uh a contract with a winning consulting firm to you in June.
Awesome. All right.
Thank you. Just want to report, I know Selby alerted you all that Crystal is going to be departing with us um very soon, so next week is the matter of fact. And so I pulled the trigger right away and with two pro uh express professionals, excuse me, out of Winatchee. And we have a wonderful gal by the name of Vanessa Ontiveros. She started today. So if you come upstairs and you see a new person there with Crystal for the next week, just know that that's the temp being trained to do her job until we get a full replacement, which will take some time. But we are gonna be starting that process just as soon as we possibly can. Okay.
Actually don't have any updates.
All right. Andy.
Um, I'm quick, super excited. We have officially hired a city engineer.
Yay.
Big news, I Bertie Bane lives in town and he will be starting it. Uh, and then we also currently have three parks positions that are posted. Uh, one parks maintenance position and then two eight-month permanent seasonal positions. Uh like Selby mentioned, Somus, uh we did have a city staff designer meeting with Somus, which was really exciting. And Selby touched on Royal Lady Plaza. And then we also looked at a couple of alternatives uh to Park Chief Park. So you'll see those at the design review or sorry, downtown steering committee. And then they'll also have a booth at the next community engagement. You can talk with them and and see the alternatives there as well. Um and we'll see this on the agenda for the next meeting, but I just want to point out that we're gonna have the presentation and discussion regarding the long-term future of our water system at the next council meeting. Um, that'll be with RH two who did, who is working on our second, second, let me call it, the second source feasibility study, source swap. We tried to change the name, source swap was a little too, but source swap feasibility study, second water source feasibility study. Um, they also did the drought and conservation plans. We're primarily just going to be touching on uh long-term final modeling and what that looks like for determining what our next water source should be. So I just want that on your radar because it is gonna be a really big and important discussion, at least in my world, but I would assume to all of you as well, but an important conversation. So that'll be at the next council. And that's it.
That's it. And I, and speaking of getting that new engineer, I wonder if that's not a fallout though of the native stuff going on because he was an engineer at NOAA before. I wonder if that
Uh, we is is a bright, trying to look at the bright side.
That's right, it's, that's happening, yeah.
Yeah. Real quick, I'm trying to understand that we lost, that we that we saved some money when the plumbers didn't show up. Did we talk about this? Did I miss that the last meeting?
We didn't talk.
No, we didn't talk about that. Did we set it up?
No, I heard about it through the grapevine. It's like yeah, they didn't wake up and didn't show up to them.
So
So they get
So Travis is talking about, we had a water meter replacement that was going on inside a commercial building that was scheduled for midnight. We were meeting at eleven thirty PM. This was inside a hotel, so we wanted to limit the impact to them. We're with the property owner to set this time uh eleven thirty PM with a water shutdown. I think we were trying to say twelve oh one AM on the eighteenth, whatever it was. And turns out midnight's utterly confusing for people, no matter how you phrase it, so we had
We saved some money, right? We didn't pay, we didn't pay.
We saved some money.
We said, yeah, like six, six thousand bucks.
I go to adjourn.
I made you adjourn, why would you want to do that?
Second.
All right.
Shane, what's going on on Saturday? What's going on on Thursday? I don't know. Am I doing on Saturday?